Good evening and welcome to the City of Montgomery City Council Meeting. It's actually a workshop meeting. So what a workshop does is allow us to hear from y'all. And then what we'll do is we'll work amongst ourselves and then you can hear what we talk about, but there is no back and forth. I want to go ahead and verify that with our city attorney. That is the motive we operate. Okay. With that, we will, we will gather in and proceed like it is a city council meeting. So with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I will ask you to turn all your phones off. DeVivey, we're off so that we are not interrupted and that everybody can hear what's going on. Secondly, I'd like to have the invocation given by TJ Wilkerson. Would you mind, Mr. Wilkerson?
Lord, we come this afternoon with humble hearts and bowed heads. Lord, we come thanking you that you reached out this morning with your loving finger of love and touched us as we woke. Well, we come tonight asking you that we be on one accord. Give us all understanding. Give us listening ear. Give us peace of mind. Brought our tongues, Lord, as we listen and go forward in this endeavor tonight. Bless this community as a whole, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance United States flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is Sam, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, this evening we'll start off with a visitor and citizen form. Just as a reminder, you have three minutes. We will have a timer for you. And I received some of the speaker requests for them, and I'm going to read them off in the order in which I received them. So this evening, we will go ahead and start off with Catherine Jenkins. Please go to the podium, state your name and your address. And on deck is Alice Coker. If you'll just stand behind Catherine, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Catherine Jenkins, my address is 14809 Lake Mount Pleasant Road. So I want to thank you all for being here tonight, and I apologize, I am going to read off my phone because I know we only have three minutes, and I want to make sure I get all my points out. So first, I do want to set the record straight, and I hate that I have to do this from right here, but one, I'm representing Wilder Love Coffee, one of the coffee, well, the only coffee one, but one of the food trucks in Montgomery. And I do want to say that we do follow all the county's health department rules and the City of Montgomery rules. Like any other coffee shop or restaurant in town does, we don't get to do whatever we want, and we have been given rules and we follow them. If you're concerned that we aren't, I hope that you'll come to us because we're open and honest about everything, and we'll show you the forms if we have to. Number two, we collect sales tax, just like every other restaurant and coffee shop in town does. We pay those taxes quarterly, and it's the same 8.25% that everybody else pays with 2% that goes directly to the city. So we're not somehow scooting out of that one. I don't know how that's come about either. Another one is that we do have a bathroom on our unit. I know that that seems to be a problem as well. We do have a bathroom on our unit that we can use, so. Number three, the lot we are parked on is private property. It's not public parking for the historic Montgomery District, so we aren't just taking over or squatting where we don't belong. We have an agreement with our landlord. The landlord has the electricity run to the parking lot. The city doesn't pay for the electricity there. The landlord takes care of the area, the city doesn't take care of the area. And if he wanted to, he could block it off and make it private parking just for us and Texas Twist and Shakes, but he doesn't do that because I think he does care about the city and wants to keep that parking available for the city as well. So if you're here because you don't like us, because we're taking up your parking, or we're not paying taxes, or we're not following the same rules as every other business in town, I do ask that you reevaluate your stance because those things aren't true. Okay? Moving on. Also, Richard, in your letter, you stated for people to go visit 403 Eats in Tomball and Deacon Baldi's in Magnolia instead of coming to the, visit the food trucks that are in our city. And I know you're talking about the food trucks in the city today, so unfortunately, many of the people in this room, even seated before us, have not come to visit our coffee trailer at all. They haven't even talked to us outside of this room, and there's some people in here who have never had a face-to-face conversation with us at all. So how can you vote on something when you haven't even done the due diligence to evaluate and get to know the people and businesses whose lives you're affecting? How can you vote on rules about food trucks in Montgomery if you haven't been to those food trucks in Montgomery?
Thank you very much, Ms. Jenkins. Thank you. All right, we have Ms. Coker up next with Nick Hadad on deck.
Good afternoon. Let me say that I am not a resident of Montgomery. I live in April Sound, but guess where I spend my money? Is in Montgomery. I've known about food trucks for, basically almost since the beginning from up in Dallas. So I was so excited to see a food truck here. One of my favorite places to entertain is Hodge Podge Lodge. I bring people from Houston up here, and then we go to have a latte after lunch. So it's kind of one of our regular, one of my regular places to spend time. I got on Nextdoor today, and the topic of the conversation was the food trucks. Bedwater, Walden, all of these places all around have come in to say, we come to Montgomery just to get a good, good latte or, you know, good coffee. So I'm just saying, you know, Montgomery is a wonderful, small town, but the future, the future is, is here with us. And we have to accept that there are some things. I mean, I'm 88 years old. I, we didn't have food trucks when I was 40 years old. But I'm, if someone wants to honestly go have a business that can serve the people, I think we need to give them the opportunity to do so. And surely my three minutes are up.
Thank you, Ms. Coker. Next up is Nick Hadad, and then on deck is Bill Clevenger.
My name is Nick Hadad, and I live at 102 Anna Springs Lane, Montgomery, Texas. I sent an email yesterday regarding the situation, and all of that still stands, but I did leave a few points off that I would like to address this evening. One, I saw a post earlier today on social media that eight people have emailed the city opposing the two food trucks at 404 Caroline. Are these the same individuals that wrote the city in opposition of Bill joining MEDC? If so, is that really credible testimonies? You all had, also, second point is, you all had the first refusal to purchase 404 Caroline, but all of you declined. Now, all of a sudden, you take quite an interest in what happens there. It sounds like you should have just bought them. I'd like to use the remainder of my time to take a moment of silence to honor the brave men and women who fought for our freedoms that you all were trying to take. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Bill Clevenger, you're up next, and Kate Jenkins on deck.
Good evening, my name is Bill Clevenger. I reside at 388 Berkeley Drive. Again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to read from my paper. I want to say thank you to all the fine folks from our community who have once again come out and supported my family and the Jenkins family. More than that, though, you've all come out and supported Montgomery, our home. I was going to stand here this evening and talk about how Texas Twist and Shake has had the pleasure in scooping up the very best ice cream to 100, to over 1,776 people as of yesterday. Fifty-one days, our establishment has generated over $1,000 in sales tax revenue, and as a landowner of the property located at 404 Caroline Street, we pay our fair share of property tax. Instead, I'm going to let you all know that I'm making it my mission to bring Austin, the capital, to Montgomery. I've already been in contact with the AG's office, and for all of you who have, who have a past, our attorneys and the AG's office are going to go through each and every one of them with a fine-tooth comb. To all the employees and the staff of the city, be prepared by having your notes in order for in-person interviews and depositions. You, the employees, have the opportunity to stand up and do the right thing by having the courage to come forth without having the fear of one person's intimidation and threatening of your positions and careers. Let me ask you a very serious question. Do you honestly believe the coach, I mean the mayor, is going to go down for you when this all unravels? I will answer that for you. No, she won't. The times come, Sarah, to put an end to all this. From the Buffalo Springs HOA to the MEDC and its manipulations of public monies, the intimidation, and right back here to City Hall, it all ends tonight. Or should I say, it all begins tonight? I also want to close my three minutes by stating the definition of what a squatter is for Councilman Sanford. A squatter is a person who settles in or occupies a piece of property with no legal claim to that property. That isn't us, we own it. I'm also making it known that the wonderful residents of historic Montgomery, Texas, be birthplace of the Texas flag, that I, Bill Clevenger, am announcing my candidacy for office of mayor. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, Kate Jenkins up, and then Brandy Christenberry is on deck, and then that will round out everyone that has asked to speak.
Good evening, I'm going to get straight to it. So there's a few main points that I would like to consider as you all look and consider these ordinances. So most impressingly, we've heard a lot about food truck parks as, as we're going into this, and we're asking you to not be another city that only allows food trucks and mobile units to operate long-term in food truck parks. Food truck parks charge a hefty rent for the understanding that you will benefit from the surrounding environment, alcohol offerings, and booming evening events. However, for a coffee trailer, our peak hours are 7:00 a.m. hopefully to 11:00 a.m., and then we'd be closed in the evening. So if we were confined to a food truck park, we would have to pay a large rent without any of the benefits of that agreement. We would be open in the morning, surrounded by closed businesses, and taking a spot in the evening, surrounded by booming business that we would not get to benefit from. Food truck parks are not a one-size-fits-all-for-all mobile units. Two, we are a coffee shop that's currently not allowed to sell coffee before 9:00 a.m. I know that, I've discussed this with lots of people. We ask that you would update this ordinance of time restriction on the food trucks to at least mimic that of the corporations in our city. You can get a coffee at Starbucks at 5:30 in the morning, you can get a coffee at Starbucks at 9:00 p.m. at night. Let's not hold the local businesses to a different standard than Starbucks. We ask that you consider changing the verbiage on the rule that no food truck can operate within 50 foot from any intersection across walk. We believe that the wording of this was intended to create safe driving conditions and prevent roadside vendors from parking in manners that would impede traffic. And since we are currently on a privately owned parking lot that's raised above the actual road, if we were to move 20 foot over, which we currently can't do under the current ordinance, we don't believe that we would create any kind of safety hazard, we don't believe that we would create any impeding of traffic. In fact, somebody could park their cargo trailer right there and leave it and be just okay by the rules, but we can't move our trailer over little to optimize the parking space and seating. So we would ask that you all consider just updating the verbiage on that, maybe. And then lastly, I bravely ask you to consider the intent and purpose behind each and every one of these ordinances that you're about to write. Is the intent to improve our community, or is it, is it because of a certain reason, or is it just a rule that you've seen another city have, so you're stamping it on our city? Please make sure that all of the ordinances they all have are beneficial to improving our city as a whole, and I'm asking that you make them to, to not hurt some of the people that are trying to run and start small businesses here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Brandy Christenberry, and then Candy Christenberry on deck, and then we will be done. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brandy Christenberry, and I live at 18913 Bethel Road.
Can you speak up a little bit? We can't hear you.
I live at 18913 Bethel Road. We've been in Montgomery for four years. It's not a secret, I am a talker. I, I'm a lover of people and a collector of friends. I'm known to be found 45 minutes after leaving a conversation, talking to a whole new group of people. How I got here was because of that. We started talking shop with all these local people and all these businesses several years ago, and the shop gossip quickly became like petty drama and politics. And so we were hearing things like non-patrons, people that weren't attending these, going into these businesses, creating rules and making decisions for them on their behalf. And some people can get permits, some people can't, like an explanation, an inexplicable reasoning is behind a lot of the things that were kind of happening to certain people and certain businesses. Unnecessary licensing and permits, rules and regulations, things about signs, people talking about structures they were trying to get built, personal vendettas, intentional sabotage. I heard things about just simple meanness and ugliness going on in my city, and it really bummed me out. As a fellow business owner, my, I own an oil company in Conroe. Just to give you a little background, my husband and I are owners of Agape Farms and Agape Farms Ministries just north of town, and also Two Tables. So as a business owner, I know that this is a very, very complicated situation. But on top of normal operations as a business owner, there's the hiring and firing and the accounting and expenses and the inventory and the profit and loss statements and the margin analysis and advertising and promo things that you've got to worry about on a day-to-day basis. Marketing and that joyful social media, regulatory license, maintaining your building and your equipment and your personal relationships, becoming a system expert in Square. Oh, no, not Square, Woocommerce, because Square doesn't work for your particular platform. There's, don't even get me started on GoDaddy. There's just torture when it comes to being a business owner. As a business owner, I just want to be an advocate for these guys to say, why wouldn't we allow these businesses and the landowners to operate their businesses as they feel they're going to operate best to create revenue for the city? From a business owner's perspective, this is an opportunity to let a potential revenue stream, and even a local family, local families around the city to thrive, please allow them to run their businesses with as much support, as much evidence, as much assistance, and maybe even as much encouragement as the city and its representatives can possibly provide, even better patronage. What a beautiful city that would be. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Karen.
Hi, my name's Karen Christenberry. I live on 18913 Bethel Road, Richards, Texas. Now, let me tell you before I start, I'm no expert on this stuff. I came here to speak on behalf of Bill and Kate, the ice cream truck and coffee truck. I personally love them. I think they're some of the nicest people I know. My friends can agree with me on that. I love going to town with my mom and my dad to get some coffee or ice cream, and on the right days, sometimes we'll even get both. I would love for them to stay here. They're just an amazing, they're just some amazing people to me. They're some of the nicest people I know, and I want them to stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And then, okay, so then we'll begin with the workshop meeting regarding food trucks in the City of Montgomery. Number one, discussion regarding food trucks in the City of Montgomery. We did receive some emails that I think also back in August that need to be read, so that they are on the record. Number one, Kevin, from Kevin Barnes, received October, I mean, I'm sorry, August 9th, 10:01 a.m. "I don't think food trucks should be used, should use parking spots in the downtown area. If a lot of owner wishes to let them use their lot, they should operate there. Generally, I don't think they should operate in downtown Montgomery except during the festivals when parking is not an issue. Jim's Hardware is an exception since they have plenty of parking space. We should focus on the historic district fixed structures, using them more. Regards, Kevin." Next, the Modern Scheme, August 9th, 2021, at 11:45 a.m. "I am all for food trucks, the more the merrier, and absolutely they need to be in the historic district. Putting them outside the district completely misses the point of having the district to be walkable, inviting area for locals and outsiders. Of course, they should follow Health Department rules and pay rent to the area they are parked at, but they should be allowed to stay permanently if they wish, i.e. long-term rent on land they are parked on, et cetera. Have each truck provide a trash can, I let them dump in the city dumpster or have picked up by the city, and seating shade in their allotted area. Business hours should be normal evening hours, subjected to the owners of the food truck. A sandwich truck can have lunch dinner hours whereas a bagel truck can open at 8:00 a.m." The argument that they just can't afford a location or should just pay a building, just rent a building, is ridiculous because frankly, there is zero space downtown to rent that's decent and to buy. You have to be a millionaire to afford what's on the market and know the right person in town. I do agree that Montgomery is becoming a great destination and place for small businesses, but frankly, it's been us small business owners advertising, pushing events, and drawing crap, sharing crap. Next up is Lloyd Ashbacher, Monday, August 9th, 2021, at 11:14 a.m. "Thank you for coordinating this response for business owners. I'm not comfortable attending a city council workshop suggested by some city council. I will comply with my top five items." Oh, I apologize, that's not Lloyd's. I apologize. These are all the string. Lloyd Ashbacher, October, August 9th, 2021, at 9:21 a.m. "Food trucks do not belong in the historic district. We should have a designated area of the city for their placement, not scattered throughout the area." Susan Stripling, Farmhouse, August 9th, 2021, at 12:20, 12:50 p.m. "I am not a fan of having permanent food trucks. Number one, parking is limited in the downtown area, and they will be occupying valuable parking spaces. Number two, I believe in keeping the historic district look historical and quaint. Number three, customers who buy food, et cetera, will then need a place to sit, therefore less parking available. Number four, I'm not a fan of customers bringing food and drinks into my shop. I think this will increase the probability of this happening. Number five, increase in the amount of trash left lying around downtown will definitely be a problem, and is. If they walk and eat and drink, and there are not enough trash receptacles, it will be left for someone to pick up from porches, potty plants, et cetera, et cetera. I see it often now. Thanks for asking." Susan Faust at Spirit Industries. "First, I love food trucks and love that they bring a variety of food offerings into an area that is usually undeserved, underserved, and it fulfills the American dream, owning your own small business and being able to work for yourself with a small overhead. With that said, there are several concerns I have with allowing food trucks in the zoned historical district of Montgomery. I know that many spent a great deal of time getting this historical designation and intend for this area to honor our rich heritage. Any permanent building, new or old, must adhere to strict permitting regulations and approvals, even down to the paint colors to use. If it is important enough to subject, to subject property owners to these regulations, it should be important enough to expect strict regulations on anything that tries to become permanent. Food trucks pay no property tax. They have to be cleaned out as they are not connected to sewer. Having no facilities for restrooms and hand washing, they have to depend on other businesses. Trash generated from food trucks is another concern. Also, parking needs to be, also parking needs to be a consideration as the city already needs more parking. Do food trucks pay a permitting fee for the days that they are in the city limits operating? As they will generate more traffic and trash, more city services will be required to keep up with the additional visitors. The current location of the two food trucks also concerning because of traffic and parking. Pedestrians are sharing parking lot area to stand, wait, and eat, not to mention walking around and through parked cars that are constantly moving and parking. Food trucks need their own area if this is to be an option for Montgomery. They need to separate, they need a separate place to be with their own parking, in my opinion. Thanks for the opportunity to express my opinion." Damon Haynes, Kids Free Ice Cream. "My opinion, some food truck employees are using pooping in one and only, in my one and only restroom. I am seven days a week, more than most restaurants are closed Sunday and Monday. I've got video of other employees crossing the street and entering my restaurant on Sunday just to use my restroom. Not too happy about this, so I reached out to the owner of the food truck to confirm his employee, and I received no response. So this is my opinion below. You submitted pictures." Cheryl Fox, Fox Insurance, received August 19th, 2021, at 3:49 p.m. "Hello, Richard, this is Cheryl Fox. Several friends, business owners in downtown Montgomery, have asked that I voice my opinion on the food truck issue. I really like food trucks. That being said, I do not like them in downtown on a permanent basis with wheels still attached. That is really not what a food truck is unless it is in a designated quote-unquote food truck park, such as the one on FM 88, 1488. Most food truck courts have public restrooms and a place to sit down to eat. When they are at certain, when they are at certain downtown events, I understand that is not the case, but they are only there for a limited time. I feel that the trucks that are now parked in the historic district of Montgomery does not do our town any favors by being there 24/7 and not sure what their hours are. I understand this has caused some unhappy people on both sides. It would be in the best interest of the city to have a fair restriction on food trucks with attached wheels. That would limit the amount of time that they could be parked within the historic district of the city. I'm sure that other cities have really good food truck ordinances to review to be able to see what works for our cities. Due to the fact that the food trucks do not pay property tax, also leaves an advantage to the mobile unit over a quote-unquote brick and mortar business." Thank you, City Resident Cheryl Fox. Brenda Ryland, August 20th, 2021, at 3:55 p.m. "Thank you for bringing this very important topic to the attention of the Montgomery Historical District Small Business Community. I have three main topics of concern. One, as a historical district, there are specific regulations that must be maintained and met to preserve the historical integrity of the district. Paint color, types of structures, signage, et cetera, are some of the things that we are, we as small business owners have to comply with in order to be a part of this historic business community. Food trucks that are permanent fixtures in the district do not comply with the regulations put forth by the City of Montgomery. Thus, should not be allowed to permanently set up business in the historic district." Number two, "I'm very concerned about the sanitation associated with these food trucks. The running water that these trucks use to provide products to their customers is provided via a garden hose, not a hose that is deemed FDA drinking water safe. The power used to provide electricity to these trucks is via an electrical cord strung from a light pole and plugged into a truck. When and where are they dumping their gray water? I believe they are supposed to dump their gray water every 48 hours for the Health Department, but I never see these trucks move, so where is the gray water going? There are no bathrooms and no seats for the public associated with these trucks, and even if other local establishments want to accommodate the public while purchasing products from these trucks, the other establishments do not keep the same business hours or business days of these trucks, so, as these trucks. So how are they able to maintain sanitary conditions as such? As a business owner, I'm seeing more trash, cups, ice cream receptacles, et cetera, scatter around the district. I'm picking up napkins and cups that appear to be blowing across the street and into my retail space. Much of this trash appears to be coming from the food trucks." Number three, "Safety of the general public is a big concern in this food truck arena. The trucks are located on a very busy corner of Caroline Street and Highway 149. Traffic on 149 is extremely dangerous, and as most of us in the district know, people driving dump trucks, heavy haulers, and many cars do not obey the speed limits on 149. It is very common to see vehicles traveling at speeds appearing to be 40 miles an hour or more up and down 149. This poses a significant danger to pedestrians passing streets to get to these trucks. Also, these food trucks are located in a parking lot. There are no barriers between the pedestrian traffic on the food trucks and the general public parking in the parking lot. There is a significant chance of pedestrian automobile accident can result as a matter of logistics in this parking lot, and it does not even consider the parking lot is adjacent to a facility that serves alcohol. Think of all the children running around getting ice cream. This is a recipe for disaster. I'm a fan of food trucks, let me make that clear, and there are many locations within the limits of the City of Montgomery that could accommodate these food trucks and many more, but I do not feel that these trucks are in compliance with many of the regulations. Be the historical city, county, or state, thus I would like to see them removed. In my opinion, the city should have never allowed them to set up in the first place. There is a planning and zoning committee, a city administrator, mayor, and city council. Any and all of these entities should have raised red flags when it became apparent that these trucks were coming into the community. If that had happened, then this all would have been avoided, and our historic district could continue to be the beautiful, welcoming community that it is known to be. So let's develop a strict plan to allow these trucks to visit our community during festivals and other specific events, but limit their time to set up to the time of the event, and no longer than 48 hours at a time. Make the events associated with these trucks, ones that are registered with the City of Montgomery, so not to allow vague verbiage that could be used as an event for food trucks set up and have their trucks comply with safety and health regulations that are specific to their types of business. Sincerely, Brenda Ryland, pets." The next one is from Kristy Schroeder, Tuesday, September 8th, 2021. "Hello, all. I'd like to voice my opinions on the food trucks in historic Montgomery. I see food trucks as a very good thing in historic Montgomery. They bring people to our town, they also bring people to our downtown shops. Not to mention, it's very nice to have them during these weekend events. I would like them to be able to permanently stay where they are. In my eyes, it's a win-win situation having them here and where they currently are located. There is not a lot to choose from in historic Montgomery, and I believe that the coffee trailer and ice cream trailer have added value to our town. I would like to see more of them set up throughout..." I would like to see more of them set up throughout downtown Montgomery. However, I do not feel that setting up a food truck park is a good thing for us. I don't think it's a good thing for them either. First of all, I'd love to get my, I'd love to get my coffee earlier, earlier than 9:00 a.m. in the morning. I would much rather give my business to small business owners here in the community than take it down to Starbucks. If a food truck park was set up, then I would not be able to get my coffee early in the morning. Food truck parks are set up and designed to cater to the lunch and especially the dinner crowds. How would my favorite coffee trailer be able to even stay open like that? That's not fair to them and it's not fair to me as a customer. I have really grown to love getting my coffee in historic Montgomery at the coffee trailer. If they were forced to have to go into some type of food truck park, the overhead would most likely be too much for them. Their business peak hours are in the morning. I think they are great where they, I think they are great where they and I hope they can't open earlier soon. Please take all of what I have said into consideration. Please do not make it impossible for them to be able to stay here and serve our community. I would much prefer to keep my business there at the coffee trailer and in our community than take it up the road to a chain that has no contribution to our community. The coffee trailer and food trucks are bringing people to our community in more ways than one. Thank you, Kristy Powell. Katie Jenkins, Tuesday, September 8th, 2021 at 9:37 p.m. To whom it may concern, I know my husband, Kate, was able to speak with Dave about the food truck ordinances, but I wanted to also share my point of view. We love getting to serve the community specifically coffee and we love our town. I'm writing this because I'm concerned that in Richard's letter, he, letter, his focus was that people should visit Deacon Baldi's 403 Eats, which are both food truck parks. But there's no mention of visiting anywhere where the food trucks are thriving outside of a food truck park. Please do not limit us to being in a food truck park. Food truck parks can be great and are a neat idea. However, if you confine us to a food truck park, our business will not survive. Food truck parks rely on the idea that businesses pay a steep rent in exchange for their high traffic of people coming to eat lunch or dinner and then the food truck will get exposure and hopefully more sales. It also allows them to have access to whatever amenities like seating, bathroom, a bar, et cetera, and more exposure from food truck park events. This is great for some, but it's not a one-size-fits-all. As a coffee trailer, our business thrives off of morning. No other food trucks are open in the morning. No events at the food truck park are in the morning. No one is coming because it's a food truck park and then deciding they will choose us. The only people that would be coming are because they already know about us from marketing and word of mouth. We will not benefit like a true food truck would at a food truck park, but we would still have to pay the high price of rent and to be there. Plus, this is just about more than just us. There are Mexican food trucks up and down 105 and even on 1097 and food truck park isn't going to let five Mexican food trucks all park there. They will be forced to take their customers and their business and tax dollars elsewhere. Our community deserves to have small businesses and new startups, not to be put in a box and also not to be run out of the city because we're unable to thrive here. We love our city and this is where we want to be. We chose Montgomery. I understand that many of you don't like us being in historic Montgomery and I am able to be objective and hear those viewpoints and if that's what it comes down to eventually, we respectfully comply. But please do not confine us to a food truck park for the sake of getting us out of downtown Montgomery. I hope you consider getting rid of the time constraints on when a food truck can open. We want to be able to serve our town before they go to work and before they go to school. Our town should be able to get coffee from a local business in the morning instead of resorting to a big chain because it's the only thing open. We have to turn away many people or tell them they are sorry we can't open sooner because it really has been a disaster. I hope you will also objectively consider the great addition we have been to the downtown area, even if you didn't like it from the start. We are supportive of everything that goes on in downtown. We like and share about all of the events happening downtown and we truly want to see it thrive and become a tourist hotspot that we know it can be. Like I've said before, we love our town. We hope that you have been able to see the amount of customers that we are bringing into our town that previously had not visited. We get customers all the way from Houston and Huntsville as well as many from Conroe. Many people come to us saying they didn't even know all the shops were even down here. We are bringing in people who gravitate, stroll the town, and then hopefully spend more money in the shops. We also have many of the local business owners in Montgomery who come every day to our trailer, as well as many of the workers from area shops who visit us regularly. We truly feel like we're a part of the community and we believe the community loves having us here. We're also bringing in a younger, a younger demographic that the downtown area is lacking in and who might not have visited our town to begin with because it's most likely marketed towards the older generation. I hope that you will truly consider the people of Montgomery and what they want, even if it's not what you want. I believe in fairness and truth and justice and I hope that every voice is heard and the right decision represented in the majority truly happens. I believe in Montgomery. Thank you for the time and consideration. Caitlin Jennings, Wilder Love Coffee. Tracy Grapp, Tuesday, September 8th, September 28th, 2021 at 10:26 p.m. Greetings. It's my pleasure to write and tell you what a wonderful town we live in. I enjoy working and living in small town Montgomery. I've enjoyed the recent addition to the Wilder Love Coffee, Wilder Love Coffee Truck and the Ice Cream Food Truck. I especially love Wilder Love's amazing coffee drinks and friendly service they provide. I would love to see them stay right where they are, just a block away from where I work. I would love to even more if you would allow them to open before I have to go to work at 8:00 a.m. So I could get a coffee in the morning before work. I totally believe in supporting small business owners. But it makes it difficult when they're not allowed to open until 9:00. I've heard that there are many, there may be a possibility that a food truck, the food trucks in Montgomery will have to be located in a food truck court. That would not be good for all food trucks. It would only be ideal for those who serve lunch and dinner and those who cater to the party atmosphere. Coffee trailers such as Wilder Love would not thrive in this atmosphere. They would not be open in the evening when the crowds were there. They cater to the morning lunch. The rent in a food truck court would be much higher as well. Lastly, please consider Katie and Kate Jenkins of Wilder Love Coffee have brought to Montgomery, Texas. They not only bring a delicious third wave coffee drink, but they also bring customers from other areas of our town to shop and cultivate our small town. I often see them complimenting other businesses in town and promoting them to other customers. Let's do what we can do to keep them in Montgomery, not force them out. Thank you for your time, Tracy Grapp. Montgomery Original Snowballs, Wednesday, September 29th, 2021 at 9:06 a.m. I am a proponent of small business and mobile food trucks coming and going from our city as it gives us more reasons, like a small event, to come to Montgomery. Jims and I were ones of, one of the first to start having mobile food trucks regularly at our businesses. Having a variety of shops and restaurants is vital for our city and we, no one should eat only snowballs. The mini golf course, Longview Greens, offers soft serve and snow cones in their permanent establishment, even though not in historic Montgomery, it is a taste, it is tasteful and complements our community, bringing more people to our city. Scooped ice cream in historic Montgomery adds value. The type of mobile food vendor is irrelevant to this ordinance rewrite. The current age mobile food vendor ordinance needs to be updated as most cities surrounding Montgomery have done, have done within the five, last five years to respond to the food truck trend. Here are my suggestions to consider. One, have limits on the timeframe of truck may be parked within a certain distance or inside the historical district. I believe by having permanently parked food trucks amidst our historical buildings, we are degrading our historical appear, appeal and rich history which so many before us have fought to preserve. Also, permanently parked food trucks devalue the commercial real estate market for quality businesses. Typically, a food truck is an option for a business who lacks the capital to have a brick and mortar business. The trade-off for a food truck owner, for food truck owners not having the capital to establish a brick and mortar is the mobile aspect. Most food truck owners would love to have a brick and mortar. They save money for it because they understand the commercial investment and benefit of being in a fixed location. Number two, require sales tech number, sales tax number and address to help track sales taxes for the city. Number three, require the mobile food vendor to park within 300 feet of a public restroom for their employees and customers. No employee should be without a restroom while working. Number four, require receipts of the gray water tank disposal cleanup regularly every 72 hours. Ensures that the wastewater inside the truck is being removed regularly to avoid unsanitary conditions. Number five, require location inspection of commissary for food stores. This ensures that the food being served has been stored properly. Food vendors usually cannot survive without, survive with just a truck for their food storage. Number six, if plugged in for power, can open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 10:00 p.m. If on a generator for power, can open at 8:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. Preserves more noise pollution for the downtown residents. Thank you to our city council for taking into consideration the absence of city business and residences. Jennifer Skinner. September 29th, 9:27 a.m., food trucks in Montgomery. And so, this is Kathy Jenkins. Sorry, I wanted to make sure I was not repeating. Attention, City Commissioner Richard Tramm. It has come to my attention that there may be some changes made regarding the food trucks in Montgomery. We as taxpayers for 26 years have the right to voice our opinions and be heard on this matter. Food trucks are a new way to bring visitors and revenue to the city. Specialty food trucks like Wilder Love Coffee in historic downtown Montgomery bring people from all over to try their coffee. They have an attractive trailer that brings new life to the downtown area. When customers come for coffee, Kate and Katie tell them about the shops and encourage them to visit them all. They also promote the surrounding businesses and have built a relationship with them. The location of the coffee trailer is excellent. However, it would be beneficial if they were allowed to open earlier, earlier as they could serve people on their way to work and school. They're hardest to bring more people to the community and in short time, they have been open. They have done just that. Food trucks have been successful in the surrounding communities. We need revitalization and growth in our little downtown district. I've also heard that Montgomery's considering a food truck park. Food truck parks are primary afternoon and evening attractions. This would not be a good fit for a coffee trailer. Food truck parks are very expensive as they offer amenities like a bar, pavilion, entertainment, et cetera. The cost of rent in a food truck park is out of reach for those young people trying to start a business. Also, all food trucks should be treated as individual business, not forced to be locked together. Food truck parks are not a solution to all food trucks as each is an individual business. Also, in regards to creating a new ordinance, everything is great with our existing food trucks. They follow all the rules and bring needed business to our community. I sincerely ask you to think about the intent and do not add the, the new rules for the sake of adding rules if the food trucks are doing well. Please know that these are people who live in our community and went on their business in our town. Making unattainable changes can put them out of business. We need to bring more people to our town. Let's come together and think of ways to help small businesses succeed and thrive. I applaud the people who are working hard, making sacrifices, trying to support families and help our community. Kathy Jenkins. Camber Drummond, Wednesday, September 29th, 2021 at 11:59 a.m. As a business owner in historic, historic district of Montgomery, I'd like to express my opinion on the existence of food trucks in the area. First and foremost, we need more businesses in the historic district. More businesses with a variety of product bring more shoppers to town which we all benefit from. Do I think the addition of food trucks on a permanent basis adds to the solution? Yes, but not in the current situation. The way that food trucks gain a following is by rotating their location, going to many different venues and sharing the product they offer with many communities. This then builds a following and thus brings their followers to our area. I do not believe this is the case with the current food trailers we have set up in the middle of town. If there was a location that was set up with restrooms and safe gathering area for the customers and their children, I think that this could benefit, not in an area that is in the middle of a parking lot. As it is now, people, families that visit these trailers are not safe for moving vehicles. They also have no readily available restroom facilities. They have no water accessible except through a garden hose stretched across the parking lot. That is completely unsanitary. Where are these trailers dumping their gray water? Neither trailer has moved from the area to dump. This is a violation of Montgomery Health Code for food trucks. If they were set up in a location with all of these things addressed, I think they could then be a benefit to the community. Also, for one, I am tired of picking up empty cups from these businesses that have been left on my porches because there are not enough trash receptacles set up in the area. Thank you, Camber Drummond. Nick Hadad, September 30th, 12:17 p.m. Mayor of City Council must say I found it quite a surprise to learn the meeting scheduled for 9:30, 2021 is not going to be an open dialogue with the community to help create a path forward for the food truck debacle that you all have created. I, as well as many others, find Texas twists and shapes and would love to be a great addition to our quaint little community, not to mention the wonderful smiles the ice cream brings to everyone of all ages. With that being said, I hope that you all look at the existing food truck businesses in place and create the revised ordinances around them. It's unfortunate these businesses are having to go through so much red tape to operate their business when the city rolls out the red carpet for franchise and big businesses all the while turning their back on our own neighbors. A prime example of this is the, is the coffee with the cops. Why are we holding that at Starbucks as opposed to one of the coffee shops downtown? The city has no issue footing the bill to have snow cones with the mayor at her dear friend and neighbor's business. Why are all aware, sorry, we are all aware of previous meetings that should the ordinances put into place after the fact of the business is operating ends up pushing them out. They plan to seek legal action against the city. I, for one, am not a fan for misappropriate spending of citizen tax dollars to fuel a personal vendetta that the mayor has against one of the owners of food trucks downtown. If we all have this kind of cash laying around to just throw away, why don't you all do something useful and go to Cedar Breck Park and see what equipment needs to be fixed or replaced? Regards, Nick Hadad, a highly concerned citizen. And then I received a second one from Camber Drummond, September 30th at 11:51 a.m. Being a historical district business owner for over 30 years, I'm concerned about the semi-permanent food trucks set up in historic area of Montgomery. I feel, uh, this is not from Camber. I apologize. This is from Kelly Cook at Liberty Bell in Queens. Being a historical district business property owner for over 30 years, I'm concerned with, concerned about the semi-permanent food trucks set up in the historic area of Montgomery. I feel we should be preserving the historical district and not the promotion of food trucks that do not have the charm of the historical district. Montgomery has wonderful restaurants that serve our area. Let's help promote local taxpaying businesses. And last but not least, Rendy Kerr, September 30th, 12:05 p.m. I like food trucks in general. I'm just not happy that with the present setup, they are the first thing you see when you pull into historic district. Also, I feel like being a brick and mortar building owner, I pay taxes on the building and all of the contents yearly. Only a part of property that these trailers stood on is not the same taxation, not revenue for the city. These businesses are not paying the same for basic utilities that all of the other businesses in Montgomery are. Thank you, Rendy Kerr. So these were all received prior to the cutoff and so I wanted to make sure. And then we've gotten a stack, um, they were sent last night after the cutoff and then this, and then today. And everyone here on council received a copy of those and we have time, we don't have time tonight to review them. However, we can certainly review those and, and bring those to the next city council meeting. So with that, we will begin our workshop and I'm drunk. But I'd like to begin our workshop. So I want to ask city, city staff, how did we get here? What is the policy and procedures to get a food truck permit?
This is the workshop scheduled back in July. Our day of work is a little ahead of schedule. I question and have several options for counsel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to start by addressing the question. Mayor just asked, how do you get a, a, a mobile food vendor license in the city? So in the skinny fact that I said we knocked 100 and some odd comments, but the one with the county permit, I'm going to start back. And the one that says at the top, it's the last three pages is what we're going to be looking at. Says city vendor ordinance regulations for mobile food trucks. The last three pages in the short check that I gave you, since I had a hard time with that. So to get a mobile food vendor permit from the city, this is out of the adoptiveness today. So you need your county department permit. You need vehicle insurance and, uh, the reason we ask for vehicle insurance, again, I think it's just, it's kind of taking on the idea of it's mobile. You see, you need to comply with the county and all state laws. But then it says, uh, the bottom six things that it's asking here, again, remote vehicle insurance, no sales on roadways with excess of 30 miles an hour, no mobile food unit should be parked within 50 feet of the street or crosswalk. Not within a school or 1,000 feet from a school. You can only set between 9:00 and 5:00. Normal sales average from 9:00 to 9:00. And you need to post the permit somewhere and you can get it and come to us with your insurance, your county permit, and a copy of the driver's license and fee and you get your remote food.
And when was this ordinance put in place?
These requirements were probably, you know, probably, I think the code cited here is 2002. So these have probably been on the books since then. Again, if you'll recall, we did change some parts of the vendor ordinance, none of which were included in kind of the mobile food unit. So if I can kind of take the next step to, and answer how we got here. So July 17th step had proposed a revision to the vendor ordinance that did two things. One, it clarified what a mobile food vendor was, so we changed the definition. And two, there was a special use requirement when we think of historic preservation district. So we came to council on July 17th and said, hey, we would like the council to consider these two. And through, you know, the weeks and months that followed, here we are, you know, workshop now. So if that answers, is that?
So I guess what I'm looking for though is, um, when someone wants to open a food truck, they come to the city and there's a, there's a, there are different, there's multiple steps, right? So you've got to go ask, you've got to tell the city what you're going to So you've got to go ask, you've got to tell the city what you're going to get, what you're going to do with the property, you've got to show a rendering, you've got to show plating or your sewer and water, correct?
Not for a mobile food vendor. No, are you talking about just for commercial development or development within the city? That would be along those lines. But for a mobile food vendor permit, you need the permit application, the county department permit, your insurance and your driver's license, you pay your fee and you're a mobile food vendor.
And so that's mobile food vendor and they move around?
Well, that's part of the rub. If I can jump over to the last page there, bottom of that last page, it says key questions for council. The staff and I think the city in general and the vendors, you know, all, we need to provide the ability for what constitutes a mobile part of a mobile food vendor. The council tells us in their requirements that if you take the wheels off this thing or you cease to be mobile, you are a food establishment. Now, you're not a mobile food vendor, you're more, you're a food establishment, which is another word for restaurant.
So how do you, so if you take the wheels off or you're not mobile, meaning you choose not to move? I mean, what's that mean? Well, but if you still, but if you choose not to move and you still have wheels on, where does that lie?
That's a question of the county that I can't answer. Again, the county says, you know, if you remove the wheels or become stationary, you're now classified as a food establishment, so you're now classified as a restaurant.
So like a brick and mortar?
Right. And I think it's a good time to point out that the council does not require a regular restaurant to have a bathroom. I know we talked about, you know, because the 300 feet to a bathroom, for clarity, they require for their employees, there is no health code requirement that I'm aware of that requires a restaurant to provide bathroom for the patrons.
Right, correct, yes, it's for the employees. So when they come, you, both of you, who works the permits? Who's in charge?
Susan does the vendor permits for us and the front office will take them, we get them to her, she'll review them all, make sure they all comply and they go out the door.
And then did you or Susan, who advised both trailer owners of the city's policies and procedures? Did y'all go over that or is this something besides?
We talked about, you know, certainly in, you know, in an effort, you know, to talk with them and talk about, you know, what it takes to get a vendor vendor.
Okay. And these, do both of these trailers have permits today?
They do.
And so they're current? When do they expire?
Right, right. They both got six month permits, so I don't know the expiration date, I don't track those, but.
Did we, so when you apply for a permit, do you need to tell where you're going to be?
Because you've got to, I'm sorry, that's one critical thing that I left out that Susan's probably over there cringing about. You have to have proof because you're not allowed to operate on public property, which means streets and right of ways. And you've got to have a letter from, you know, the property owner that says that you can be, you know, on this property.
But so are you, if you're a property owner, I know that there was a rendering submitted, but then a trailer came in to get a permit, didn't say where they were going to go, and then that trailer opened earlier than the rendering that we got? How does that all work? There's, because now there's two trailers on this property we're talking about and how did, is that in accordance with our ordinances?
So we took the, when Bill talked to us probably a year and a half ago, or, you know, I don't know, maybe almost two weeks ago at this point, it was, you know, so he said, okay, you're going to make some changes to the lot that you own that's in the historical downtown. And I'll be candid with you, I had a hard time boxing again and figuring out, you know, how to approach it because we normally ask the planning and zoning commission to, and all of our zoning code and all the design criteria for the downtown is all written around structure. It's not written around, it's not meant to encapsulate something that has a license plate on it. And so, but the site plan itself, you know, if he says, hey, you know, this is what it is today and I'm going to change it, I'm going to put a trailer here, I'm going to put some tables here, you know, he brought that to the city, you know, we took the planning and zoning commission, had a discussion about it and they said this.
So do you agree that you or the city followed all of the ordinance of the 2002 ordinance? 20,000, I mean, yeah, 2002 ordinance, we followed it to the T?
Oh, I'll say I followed it to the absolute best of my ability with advice of legal.
That leaves you out there. That leaves nothing.
You know, but, you know, again, you know, many cities are wrestling with this, you know, let's not pretend that this is our, if this is our, you know, subject even, you know, new drive.
That's true.
You know, as we talked about, our vendor ordinance was written for the road coach that's going through a new subdivision and that's why it says you can't park within 50 feet of a street corner or a crosswalk because they anticipate them stopping on the street in a neighborhood where houses are being built and folks, you know, sometimes.
So then are you saying that we didn't have actually an ordinance that would fit the needs of these trailers?
I said the bottom of food truck movement.
Because that's what I'm going to say.
I wouldn't just wipe that out for that.
Okay. So then, so then what happens if we don't have an ordinance that fits into what a business owner is asking for? Alan, this is a question I'm asking you. Do we go ahead and give them permitted or do, what happens there? Because I think this is a unique situation.
Right, well, if we didn't, if the city feels that they're reasonably fitting into what you have, then yes, you go ahead and give them a permit, which I think is what was done. But that doesn't mean that you sit back and do nothing. You know, food trucks are very popular and increasing everywhere. I like food trucks. But you do have to update your ordinances to make sure that you fit with the modern technology, the modern usage of food trucks.
And the city's failed to do that since 2002?
Well, you know, I think candidly, you know, I've been here for 16 years. I mean, this is about, you know, what are you, two years?
I know, it's a new craze, right? Yeah, exactly.
I wouldn't say that we've been, you know, decades out of it.
And I wouldn't call it a failure if a city felt like this, like many small communities.
It's trouble. It's something new, for sure.
You're dealing with things all the time, water, sewer, cars, you drain, and, you know, it's when something like this comes up, this is another thing you have to deal with.
So this is a question for you, Dave. Do you think that we cut corners in approving these permits?
No, man, not at all.
And what's the process at the time of expiration? What are they required to do or what are their options when those, at the six month when they expire? What happens then?
Well, they would reapply and get one, but it goes back, we need to answer that fundamental question, what's mobile food? I know what we want, you know, so if we look at the county requirements here that's got the county seal at the top, it tells us that, you know, right at the top, it's in the first sentence, the term mobile food unit means a vehicle mounted on wheels that resides and is readily movable. Any mobile food unit that moves wheels will become stationary, will be classified as food establishment and must meet the criteria of food establishment. One of the things that seems paramount to me, and again, it's what I wrestle with with the planning and zoning issue, is how is a mobile vendor, you know, look at under, you know, and what is this, is designed for buildings, you know, historic preservation ordinance? I mean, it's not at all designed for.
And so I think that's part of our struggle, I mean, nobody up here is opposed to food trucks. I mean, nobody's opposed to small business. I've been a small business owner. I don't think that's, I'm not speaking for everybody on council, but I definitely don't think that that's the problem. What the problem is, is trying to understand what the process was and if we didn't have something that matched or you felt like maybe it did match, it seems that there was miscommunication between the trailer owners and city hall because they thought one thing and then city hall thought another thing and it seems to be, this is where this debacle comes from. There's a few aren't understanding.
I think what the city thought is that, you know, that the county requirements that say right here in black and white, you know, it tells you that you have to move every 48 hours, they're on page two. It's, you know, again, it's bigger than anything else on the page. All mobile units must move every 48 hours to dump waste and refill tanks. Now, we've been talking with the health department, apparently there are some unwritten, you know, workarounds. I think it'd be important and one of, at least, you know, my suggestions for the city would be to encapsulate the county requirements that you think are valid into your ordinance that you can enforce. Because right now what we've got is, well, the county says they have to move every 48 hours to maintain their permit, but we don't, we don't, you know, have anything to do with the county's permit. So we end up, well, okay, let's reach out to the county to make sure things are still in compliance. If you want to be able to control something, my suggestion would be to put the requirements, again, and I took the liberty of adding a couple on in the back of the packet there, but you want to put, to me, so you don't want to get into the health, you know, the temperature time and temperature stuff and try and have that in the department and that's what I would use them for. But things like, you know, do you want a food truck to have to move or is it okay if you're stationary? You know, fun is only, again, to me, it feels weird to think about a mobile food permit for someone who's never planning on going anywhere.
That's confusing, yeah.
And that's not an awful food truck, that's just I'm trying to rectify my mind. If you get a mobile food, there's only three words in there, mobile, food, vendor. So you sell food and you do it, you know, in other places. So it's, you know, how do we want to define mobile? That, you know, needs to come from you guys, you know, after you talk about it and discuss it and then we know how to carry that out. And we'll certainly advise you and talk about, you know, you know, the things that we've learned from other cities. I'm neck deep and eyes crossed in other ordinances, I couldn't tell you who that's what now because it's, you know, that's how many of them I've read.
So do we require the city to get any proof of liability outside of vehicular insurance or liability? We don't. So no property?
I certainly feel like we wouldn't kind of require that of saying, you know, Starbucks, we didn't ask them, you know, to give us insurance.
Okay, just a question here.
How much more different is, I'm sorry, how much more different is the mobile food vendor permitting process than it would be for Wendy's that's coming? What is the brick and mortar process versus this? What's the difference?
Absolutely, I'm cheating, I'm going to use some of my notes here. So some of the things that a normal development would do is they've got to have a certain amount of parking, they've got to treat the lighting a certain way, the utilities have to be done a certain way, that would include a grease trap if you're, you know, a food establishment, landscape and tree preservation requirements, historic district if, you know, that applies. So there's from a, you know, from a developer standpoint or from what we would review, we don't, again, so when it comes to a mobile food vendor, we're not looking at how many parking spaces there are, we're not looking at is there a grease trap because it's a fundamentally different animal. But again, you know, the question that I think that I would like to be able to talk through with you guys is, you know, what constitutes mobile and when are you no longer mobile? Because the county tells me here, when, you know, when you stop moving or you take the wheels off or you just cease to move, you're a food establishment now. And that's, you know, the gray area is not, you know, it's just, you know, how do we?
So we can take the counties and then make it more specific toward us and so that you're saying we need to like kind of hone in on it?
Right, you know, and there's nothing saying, you know, that you have a 300 foot above a bathroom for the employees, you know, as an example, honestly, this is 200 feet. There's not a magic number for it, just a, you know, you want a convenient place for the employees to be able to use the restaurant.
So do you think that the county health department, because have they been out here? I don't know. Do they need to visit more regularly?
My understanding is they probably have. I think they're probably under staff, you know, but I know they have to.
So, okay. So that's, so if we adopt some of the county's staff under ours, then who would regulate that?
Probably we do.
Okay, okay.
But, and again, I recommend that we don't go down the time and temperature as the health department, you know, the sort of the mission of that because we don't view that as an agreement with them. But things like, that are easy to check and the things that are important to you guys. If we can roll those into here, then that gives us just a clear path to be able to say, you know, here's our rules. Because right now, our rules say you have to follow the county rules and it turns out the county rules really are not as clear cut as anybody thought despite being really clear and black and white on their, on their rules. It turns out that the deeper you get into it, there's just a lot of, well, not really.
And then you put it in the historical district, which adds another layer of complexity, rules, whatever, ordinance is, whatever that word is. All right, so let's button it up. Do they have to do anything different than what Wilder Love or Texas Twists and Shakes? Or did they all, are they all treated equal?
Who's that?
Split it up. Because they're in a different location, they're not in the historical district, so.
With the exception of, they don't have to go to the planning and zoning commission for anything, but they're still about to hold a food vendor permit and operate, you know, mobile food vendors.
So they went through the same process, other than they missed the planning and zoning? And planning and zoning, the other two went to planning and zoning and they were asking for what? Did Wilder Love go to planning and zoning as well?
No, we took the bills over there, but we've not done anything, things have just, you know, really been, you know, candidly on hold trying to figure out, you know, what the next step is and what council, you know, wants us to do to take it, you know, I don't know that I would want to go to planning and zoning and just, you know, to turn right around and find out, you know, two months later that I've got a whole different set of rules from you guys that I may follow. So.
Well, we're not revamping the historic district rules or regulations, so what allows or disallows operation of these mobile trucks within the, specifically the historic district? Do you know?
You know, again, to my mind, the way I understand the historic district ordinance is I can't find any, any relation to the vendor itself, to the site I do. Because the site, that's, it's, you know, the historic preservation ordinance, if you've got an old house, you can remodel the end of it, you know, as much as you want, you never have to come to the planning and zoning commission. But once you see something that affects the visual continuity and the character of the historic district, that's the threshold we need to involve the planning and zoning commission and that's where I see a very clear path to be able to understand and deal with, you know, again, the site, you know. If I can touch, just for a second on food truck parks, we used as an example, Deacon Baldi's and 403 Eats, you know, to me, it's not a, it's, if you could for a minute, please don't think about the size or, you know, what games they have or, you know, anything else, the color, the, you know, stuff down there. The thing with the food truck park, and I think the key thing to talk about here is that's where they no longer have to be mobile. So I think it's important to think about a food truck park not as, you know, well, we're thinking of something, we're suggesting something that would, you know, limit exactly that. It's the, it's the framework of that. It's, if you want to be somewhere long term, what needs to happen on that site? You know, do you need things like, you know, a grease trap if you've got, you know, multiple food vendors there, you know? Do you want, you know, you know, again, they can't hook to, the way I read, the way I read county regulations, they can't hook to a, you know, a sewer line or a permanent water line and still be that mobile food vendor there now or any food establishment. And so we say food truck park, you know, insert a food establishment if it makes it easier to ask questions and talk about. So it's really not a, not about the amenities of a food truck park or the composition or the feel of it. It's how do these people stay long term in one place and what's the framework they look for there?
Do you know what the state calls a food truck or what their parameters are?
I do, they use mobile food units, you know, very similar to the way that the county does. I did a little bit of reading today actually on, you know, in the Texas administrative code that talks about, you know, mobile food units and what they have. But again, it's designed to really talk to counties or the cities with the health department. So those, to my mind, we follow the county guidelines, the county follows the state guidelines. And I may be wrong on that, I don't regret it if I'm wrong, but I know we don't regulate things, you know, as a health department. So I think it's really, you know, the county, again, for us, that's, that really needs to be where we look for the definitive answer and bought on that, can we ensure something in our own code that gives us that clarity?
Dave had a quick question for you, since this has been going on for a little while and, and again, this is not just about Wilder Love or Twists and Shakes, it's about the future of food trucks in Montgomery altogether, right? In regards to those two, what discussions have you and Richard argued, you and Alan over, what discussions have you guys had in regards to finding a way to move forward and continue, right?
I think that's what this is about.
Yeah. Why does my question, what do you think?
You know, I think it's important to consider, you know, if I had a tip, I would solve the problem before I dealt with the specific, you know, vendors involved. I mean, that's the whole point is we don't want to carve something out that's, you know, we don't want to set a policy that's written around one situation.
No, no.
So what we want to do is, you know, establish that framework and then we help them understand how they fit in that.
Typically, you try to think of every kind of, if it's a peddler or solicitor, whether it's solicitors on feet, peddlers on one wheel, pedaling, I don't know, like, but you line those out and I think some of the vernacular is old is what we have and I went looked up multiple cities and. And I went and looked up multiple cities and pulled out some items. And it seems like a lot of cities that have revamped have really updated the language and put in more current time. And I know this is going to be ever-evolved, it probably had to redo it in three years because something new will be coming out, right? So, I mean, this is not toward any one particular business owner or one particular trailer at all. It's just us growing up and getting it. And I'm not, you know, I don't have a vendetta that's been talked about, I won. There you go. So with that, counsel, what else do you, other questions do you have?
I have a statement.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I just read a statement? I've been here four months and two weeks. Dave, can you clarify when the initial discussions took place for this permitting process?
I believe September 19th is.
Bill, does that sound a lot of fall back?
Is, is that what you thought the problem?
No, I think it started in July.
July of 19, and so then that follows when, you know, we started talking, you know, one, nothing was one. Twenty, sorry.
So let me clarify something. I was in Sour Lake. So there's been some unfair accusations made, one of which we just heard earlier aimed towards me regarding the word squatter. And in context, that was out of a statement I put in by request of Mr. Tram in August that everybody here, my constituents, my colleagues, just now are seeing, I suppose. And in context, I was critical of the policies that evidently Bill Clevinger had an understanding and he squatted. I didn't know nothing and I still don't know anything about a purchase of land. So, well, that's fine, but when I came, excuse me, that's fine. But when I came from that conversation that Bill and I had, honestly told him, listen, I'll go back and try to find out stuff, but it was clear as mud. So with that said, my recommendation for moving forth, so I'm gonna just get this all out here because it answers a whole lot of things, with mobile vending ordinance. And I want you to pay attention to mobile vending because in that correspondence in August, I make the point that we can see a day when it's going to be more than food. Jewelry, jewelry's gonna pull up at the jewelry shop and park their truck for an unknown amount of time. Are they not? It's gonna happen. So maybe food is too restrictive. I can see a time when a, when a, a, a mobile truck can cozy up to the cozy grate and sell wine and spirits. And I know we're gonna have an owner, rightfully so, harder than a hornet when that happens. So here's the thing, we should consider subjective opinions and we've got dozens of them. And that's good because research and practice tells you, get the input. And we're just now doing that. However, I'm recommending that these do not taint the process or substance of our ordinance's policies. And my simple premise is this, truth is what we're after. And that can never be found on the basis of sheer volume of opinions. You can hand me a stack from the floor to the ceiling on how everybody feels. And I've articulated that very clearly and I'm just reinforcing this idea. I want to make decisions based on objective, research-based by the experts. I said that from day one. Based on a long-range plan and mid-range plan to make short-term decisions. Since I was running, I ran on that. I brought it here in the brief time that I've been here. So let me give you an example of subjective opinion. People texted me and messaged me, they wanted to know my feelings. And this is what I said, I do not feel that mobile vending units belong in a historic district. But that original subjective viewpoint has now been proven as wise and prudent because as of the past two weeks, just the past two weeks and finishing this statement today, I have received proper training and the information from the Texas Municipal League along with this draft titled City of Montgomery Downtown Design Master Plan, which you see here. So I don't make any decisions on how this person feels and that person feels. I was sent here as a policymaker, I need empirical data. I have, and serving on the MEDC, just finishing up some TML training related to the MEDC. And I have the clarity that I need in moving forward. So what do we know and how should we proceed? Because that's what this is about. And what do I find from this? And especially a one hour and nine minute, very informative TML that I finished Tuesday night. Now highly, I highly say our problem's education, okay? We need to educate people instead of just throwing this stuff out. And what does everybody say? I didn't mumble them, but I guarantee you, parking, parking, parking. And I hate dwelling in the past. We don't live there anymore. With that said, no hypercritical thing intended, but dead gummit, you had a parking lot? You should have been a parking lot, end of story. Number two, follow this master plan to establish, and this is a quote, establish consistent, here's a key word, unique visual identity for downtown. It's on page 33 of the master plan explicitly, and it is an implicitity in there dozens of times. By the way, by the Gunda Corporation, which evidently the city paid thousands of dollars to get the best experts to tell us what to do for bringing business into town and for making it a warm inviting place for people to walk around and sip what they want to sip and solve the world's problems. So we see these words, heritage, culture and history specific to your city. So I agree, what's good for one city is not necessarily good for another, brother. In this same plan and on that one hour and nine minute episode, you will hear that mayor, along with a well-studied, longtime city council MEDC person, I can't remember the name of the city, educate, educate, educate. Those words came out of my mouth as well. We need to do a better job in informing people. So we're all not spouting off what we think we know, including myself. So we have clearly stated city goals which match the best practices for city growth, in my view. We have consistency between our goals and the recommendations of the Gunda Corporation for the revitalization master plan. And finally, I believe in my short time here, we have highly competent and qualified city personnel, legal assistants, and highly informed, experienced engineering services who are well apprised of our past, our present and our future. Now, for my subjective opinion, as stated in my August writings, I believe there was an issue with procedures that gave and allowed for misunderstandings which supports why I seconded the motion of Kevin, whose words, I'm just paraphrasing, were correct. It seems that there's mistakes on both sides. I seconded it, we needed to table it. This was due to fallible people making errors on both ends of dealings. People make mistakes, folks. This was also due, however, to the fact that we are truly in uncharted waters, which you well stated. And these are growing pains, folks, which, as you stated, are very common when you get online and you see all the cities that have struggled, including this article that came about right after I typed this by way of somebody from the foodie group who says, why do Hunts, why does Huntsville not allow food trucks December 2019? Supports their assertion of banning the food trucks from the downtown cultural district, but they got food trucks everywhere else. Bingo. That's my deal and I will not waver from that. So I believe this is my time, sir.
Let me explain to you just a second. This is probably the last bit of it to disrupt. So please, I respect each other's respect proceedings, okay? Thank you.
Also recently is today, central to the solution of these issues is enforcement, which we have had discussions about in the budget preparation task. So whatever ordinances or policies that we set forth, it's not going to do any good if we don't have right and proper enforcement of those policies. And just this morning with coffees with the popo, the police chief was having a discussion about us bringing on board, in fact, someone and that someone needs to be somebody who's approachable, somebody who can get the point across, a master type person, resolve issues without creating other issues. So this needs to be the right person, it needs to get forward with that and that's my recommendation as well. So in closing, I'll say this. I'll need to say this just publicly to get it off my chest. We, the council, and I'll continue to speak for myself. I think for myself and I speak for myself and I do for myself. I've got two master's degrees and a lot of experience. I don't need anybody else telling me stuff. I do not like, and I'll say this to the police chief as well, we've read a bunch of emails, they just keep coming in. And then I get this stat, thank you for your efforts, Dave. And I read every one of them. I don't like to be threatened, chief. I do not like to be threatened. I'm a man of God, but I see nothing in the word of God that tells me to lay down and get run over. Okay? And we've been threatened verbally.
Yes.
And I would like to ask our police chief to help policymaking for which I really wanted to be a part of, but I ain't no politician. I got no axe to grind, I got no money to invest. Which is a caveat, I think things go better in policymaking land if you don't have any land that you're worried about, no business that I'm worried about. But what I am worried about is us making irrational decisions. So I like your very point about not letting these particular two entities drive or compel going forward. But at the same time, I'm a man of compassion and I don't want to see them just run off. And so this six-month thing, if we need to extend it, we need to extend it until we get it right. All right? I'm done.
So back to the ordinance as it stands right now, what are your recommendations for the one through six as far as things that you would think that wouldn't need to be changed or amended? I mean, I have my own personal opinions, if you'd rather me start versus you start, but I would like to hear your thoughts on it too.
Absolutely, absolutely. One of the suggestions that I would make, and I've got.
I know you had the three, yeah, saw your three additions.
You know, to the closet restroom, you know, within 300 feet. If we put that in our order, so we don't rely on the county, then we enforce that.
I'm sorry, where are you looking, on page?
The very last page of that little packet?
Right, the very last page there, at the top of the page it says possible addition to the ordinance and the bottom of the page is key questions to council, three questions.
I know, I got mine all mixed up too, sorry. We should have numbered these.
I will do, yeah. I'm in a second, but I've now met them all.
I literally have shuffled them in every which direction now, so.
Any witnesses? Does anybody witness?
Yeah.
So the restroom within 300 feet, you know, that's the county's requirement. I think if we just ensconce that in our ordinance, that we can enforce that and we don't have to rely on, you know, again, you know, some other entity to enforce that for us. And again, that's, if that's important to you guys, I will advocate everything I'm saying is, if this is important to you.
Right.
So again, to me, the mobile unit, you know, the idea of being mobile, mobile means movement. You know, to me, it's important to you that a mobile food vendor permit means that the person that's mobile and they're not somewhere, you know, all the time. Again, I think that's the key question that we're trying to answer.
So would you agree though, that we do have a separate entity that's kind of a special animal, hard to define, and that is the food truck park? If I'm hearing you correctly, we need to decide whether there's a certain set of businesses, whether it's treated as a fixed location, which my initial inclination would be, let's be fair. So whatever's true for the fixed brick and mortar ought to be true for the fixed. And whatever's true for the mobile ought to be true for mobile.
That's what he said, the food truck park is going to count as an actual restaurant at the brick and mortar because they're going to be locked down and not mobile.
That sounds good.
Yeah, he said that.
The question for, for me comes down to this, do we, because like you're looking through the county rules or regulations that basically if those two folks that we have today, if they were to take their wheels off and stick it on jacks, bend their compliance to a restaurant, basically is what the rules say.
But the minute that they detach from a truck, they took wheels off because they're no longer mobile right now and they can't move on their own without a tech truck, yeah.
So my second thing is that wasn't asked, okay, I answered that question. You know, how to take the wheels off, not being pulled by anything, so they're.
They're, they're no longer mobile the minute they're disconnected from a vehicle because they don't have an engine or a motor to move themselves.
There's other cities that have like those.
So my, my thing, I was going to ask you was, do we need to make a specific, like, trailer versus?
Yes.
Vehicle and then need to specify out what the insurance requirements are for trailer versus mobile? Because my gut would say that if it's mobile, it needs a higher insurance liability or umbrella than does a trailer that doesn't have its own engine and the car that's pulling it would be legally responsible for damages.
Right. The, in the, in the draft for us back in July, you know, again, the two things we did, we changed some definitions to articulate that mobile food unit, to include concession carts, concession trailers, you know, that type of thing. And then other changes in that July draft was special use permit in the downtown area. The, I guess the rationale behind the special use permit in the downtown area is, you know, if, if it says, if it really is not a building, right? It's, it's not something that P and Z can look at and say, I'm looking at a facade, I'm looking at an exterior elevation, I'm counting windows, I'm looking at, you know, materials, whether, you know, is this a restored material? Well, that to me seems a little, you know, inadequate to be able to properly judge if the food truck's going to be if you're going to be, you know, a food truck in downtown and get a special use permit. But again, it comes back to the mobility. You, you answer the mobility question before you answer any other one of these.
Right, and that's whole semi-permanent doesn't go. You can't be permanent and you can't be mobile at the same time. Semi-permanent does not work.
You're either mobile.
One or the other.
Or if you're not mobile, you're now a food establishment and you've got to set rules.
I'm asked, almost like we say, you're, you're established, you're not going anywhere. If you do pull it off for the day to go to a festival, you're like, you're like, you're right? Because you just don't bother with the set.
Think that that changed your use though? I mean, if you look, so you said Conroe had, that mayor's got it and they're doing great stuff. It's interesting that you say that because I'm pulled there and we've got a mobile food unit, they've got a mobile food court, they've got a push cart, they've got a push cart downtown area, they've got a roadside food vendor, which all of these classifications are good. But I don't know if you're aware, because if you think they've got it right, they only allow you to be there for four hours, you cannot be in the downtown business district. You have to, I mean, there's still, here, there's way more qualifications to get permits done. So if, if that's what you're looking for, we can certainly adopt theirs and just put Montgomery on it.
Talking to me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm not considering playing with that question.
But they said accessible restroom facility shall be provided with a permanent structure, excludes porta-potties and trailer toilets, lighting associated with the occupancy. shall comply with the code of ordinances, a fire lane shall be provided with a mobile food court as required in the city's adopted fire code. The placement of the mobile food unit shall not impede traffic nor visually impair any other, any motor vehicle operation within the parking lot, driveway, or street. Mobile food units and related activities must be located in compliance with the city's adopted fire code standards regarding the storage and dispensing of flammable combustible liquid or gas. Commissaries are on-site, because having your additional food, whatever it is, stored off-site, that, you should have your bathroom there, and you should have your commissary there, almost like a restaurant, especially if you're going to be a permanent food truck, and not going back and forth to an off-site commissary where your additional items are that you're going to sell."
You said, if I can repeat what you're saying, see if I've got it right, if you're mobile, you operate under a mobile food vendor, you know, under the regulations, if you are somewhere longer, then you need the stuff that the food establishment has.
Right, so if you move about every 48 hours or whatever it is, then you don't need any of that. But if you're going to be stationary in one place more than 48 hours, and these are the requirements that are necessary, if you're going to stay, you know, I don't know, did y'all say, we all got a six-month permit, I don't know that we knew that y'all were going to stay in the same place for six months. I understand we didn't know that, right?
I didn't know if it was coming in or out. I don't, you know, we, again, we operate-
Did we not ask that question?
We asked for the proof of, oh, we don't say, do you plan on, you're applying for a mobile food vendor permit, do you not plan on being mobile? We do not ask that.
So that's probably something we need to ask. Are you wanting to be in a fixed corner, or are you going to leave in a day, you know, you're going to be here?
Well, nothing in our current ordinance says that they have to move every 48 hours.
Right, that's why, that's the purpose of this workshop, right?
Right.
So, they didn't have to disclose it, we didn't have to ask, so then I understand where the confusion is, the certainty, you know? And, but if one trailer had to go to P&amp;Z, why wouldn't we think the other trailer had to go to P&amp;Z? That's what I don't understand, because P&amp;Z approved one sign. There's two signs on that property.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
There's two signs on the property. If P&amp;Z is, they approved a sign, which is-
The exterior graphics, is that-
Yeah, but for the sign ordinance for a historical district, you cannot have two signs. And there's two signs on one property, the property cannot have two different signs.
Especially the second trailer?
Yes, so I would, since Wilderlove was there first, they were in compliance with that. When Texas Twists and Shakes moved in, now they're out of compliance. Was that message ever given?
Well, they don't have it. Wilderlove opened first, so they came first.
Oh, they were physically first. Twists and Shakes was physically there first.
But they were, but then what was actually happened was never approved. Is that what I'm hearing?
We have to, if they were going to 404 care, again, I, you know, personally, I would rather not ask them if they plan on being, you know, mobile when they're applying for the permit. You set a policy for that, so you don't ask that question. It's just, are you compliant with this policy now? You know, so, you know.
Okay, so on the current policy, back to my original question that I asked that we never finished, please, from one through six, on this policy, on this front page that we currently have as our ordinance, this lower paragraph, from Dave McFarquandell's mouth, what are things that need to leave this current policy?
Gotcha. Number three there, I don't, again, I don't care for the 50-foot, you know, restriction that, that, anything that gets our code enforcement guys or office guys into taking action, please.
Right.
You know, give them the latitude to evaluate an unsolved situation and the direction isn't there. I thought people were forward, I don't know that I've implemented that, in with what you have, but again, I don't think we need the 50-foot, you know, requirement. Again, it's, you know, as Kay mentioned, there's a parking space there, if you can park a car there, I'm, again, just trying to wrestle with why is, why is a-
So what happens in a festival-type situation where you've got, are they under a special set of rules because it's a festival than this?
Yes, because you've got a street closure, you know, they're already in the street thing, or the street festival.
But this is, this property is an anomaly in the downtown historic district. It is the only one that I know of that actually has curbs around it to keep cars in. Everything else is kind of a open and free-for-all, and so where this one, I could see very clearly, they would be impossible for them to park 50 feet from it. It wouldn't be in a different situation. And what we're writing is a rule that applies to everything, not just this one situation. So I just want to make sure that we're clear, that you're saying that in any situation across the entire city, we don't need a 50-foot off of any street or corner.
That's what I believe, because I believe that in conjunction with, they have to be on private property. So we take away the idea that they can just stop on the street anywhere they want. So if you have to be on private property, whether there's a right-of-way and, you know, the property lines a certain distance, it varies based on the width of the right-of-way. But once you get on private property, if I can park a car in the corner and be fine, or as Kay mentioned, if it was just a utility trailer, I can park that there and be perfectly fine. It's the consistency that I can't get, you know, straight in my mind, is-
So do we need to add a statement about, I know there's a common sense applied, common sense is not always common. So do we need a statement that is on here that, no parking or connectivity in any public right-of-ways?
Then you need to define right-of-way.
No, we don't, because right-of-ways are established based upon the city. They're already established.
You know, so it says, so where a food truck can operate today is on private property or a city-designated public location. So if the city decided, hey, we're going to do food truck Fridays, you know, and, you know, just a quick example of the city of Dayton. So the city of Dayton, they've got a food truck park, and my understanding, it's the city's food truck park. What they do is they use one of the vendors, they found, you know, the reliable vendor that they wanted to, you know, that they wanted to use, and that's kind of their manager or their, you know, liaison for the food truck park. So they got somebody running it, basically that's one of the managers. And so that's the way the city doesn't, you know, doesn't have to get into the staffing and the overhead of, you know, manning a food truck park. It's, you know, one of your vendors that you identify, it's a reliable person, you know, that's what you do. So, but again, you can't be in the right-of-way today unless it's a city-designated location, or we can't be on public property, I shouldn't say right-of-way, I should, so you can't be on any public property, which includes those right-of-ways. But I do believe that, you know, just a good, you know, definition that ensures a safe, you know, situation for there, and then gives, you know, the police the ability to look at something and say, "Well, 50 feet, you know, we've been fine over here, but man, 50 feet's not fine over here." And they say, "Well, on 50 feet, you can't do anything." You know, that's the kind of, you know, those guys are going to be to make a call out on the street, be able to look at a situation, and we trust them to do their job and to create a safe situation out somewhere.
Dave, let me ask you this about number five. To me, it's just common sense, and I agree with Julie, sometimes common sense isn't so common. But I really don't know the full story on the time restriction rationales in general, and certainly it makes more sense for breakfast-oriented people to be able, I say, as early as 6:30. That's when the construction crews are, you know, out here getting ready to work on time at seven or whatever, and there's hundreds of houses in construction all around, so it'd be a great deal. So that, to me, is a slam dunk. But then I read the research, it says 70-plus percent of all retail sales take place on the weekend and after 5:00. And you look at the typical historic downtown and businesses, we need to educate, and I know that's a, you know, Thursday sip and stroll, you know, we don't want to open late. I'm just saying, at least educate business owners, listen, you're restricting when you say Monday to Friday, and you set these business hours. Well, no wonder you struggle. It's already going to be a struggle because of Walmart and all that. And so, you need to make yourself available. So there's that, and just tell me in general, why do we have those time restrictions? Is it a curfew-type thing, or what?
Again, you know, to me, this was designed to roll up in a neighborhood, this was a truck that drove up in the neighborhood, had people going to work, you know, the school buses and stuff, let's keep them out of it.
Certainly, a school- Anything like this in our business district. So that's why, I mean, I'm 100% will open at 6:30, open at 7:00, because I personally cannot, and I've told you all this, I cannot drink coffee after nine o'clock in the morning, because it wired me up, it's like, but I love the coffee. I mean, it was delicious, and 100% support you, but it's just, so I agree that the hours needs to offer, bring them earlier.
In the letter that you read from Canberra, I think she delineated, I think it was Canberra, she delineated a good point. If you are operating on a generator, you should have a separate hour.
Absolutely, and we don't want to hear a jargon.
Right, right, you know, because again, that gets into a noise issue, but if you're plugged in and, you know, and you're operating, you know, inside of a unit, like you would be operating inside of a store, to me, it is hard to see the rationale, again, given the current, you know, kind of food truck phenomenon, why 9:00 AM, you know, is a time worth hanging on to, not, you know, moving it earlier.
That's a very good point, because of convocation, lines of food trucks, none of them from here, disappointingly. I don't know how that happened. But, I mean, we're standing there, and you can't hear yourself think they're so loud. So that's a good point.
You're screaming at them, again.
Yes.
So do we need to have a historical district food truck ordinance, and then outside of the historical district? Because personally, all I heard from business owners and residents is preserve history. And we've all, everybody up here, and others have run on preserving history. And so, and that's one of the things that makes us unique and quaint, and when it starts to look like a circus, it's a little bit, it doesn't preserve that history, or when there's things that don't look historical. And so-
Back to the special permit, because it does-
If it means one trailer on one piece of property, or if it means they're up two blocks and go outside of, on Clepper and park there, I don't know what the answer is, and that's what we're all up here trying to figure out, but there's certainly options. But I do think historical preservation is key, and it was said over and over and over for people that I've talked to. Now, let's talk about our brick and mortars, though. I mean, Julie went and spoke to them, and you had an interesting conversation.
I had lots of interesting conversations, because I did, like everything else, do my homework on this, too.
We all do, Julie.
I know, but I'm not saying that I don't, I'm just saying that-
You're emphasizing that you do all of this on Tuesdays.
I did about four hours of just talking to business, brick and mortar business owners yesterday, and then ahead of this, I have eaten at Bill's Ice Cream Shop. I do not drink coffee. It is not personal. I know I'm probably the only person in the whole Montgomery that doesn't drink coffee. My husband doesn't drink coffee, none of us drink coffee. It's Coke Zero or water, so, for the record, it is nothing personal. I just don't drink coffee. But, the biggest thing I heard over and over again was the bathroom issue. Lots of customers coming in from both of these stores to utilize other private brick and mortar restrooms. So here's the concern. Those private brick and mortar businesses pay to have somebody or themselves clean the bathroom, provide toilet paper, then they pay city fees for water and sewage, and that's all command and expense to them while trailers are making the profit. Then there was a concern about the possibility that the Jenkins don't live inside the city limits, and whether they're filing their sales and use tax correctly, meaning that they're filing it for the address that they're located at, or the address that they live at, determines whether or not that sales and use tax is paid into the city or not. And I don't know if they do or don't, because that's another world that I haven't looked into. The other big concern is that we have a mobile food truck coffee shop literally set up in front of the brick and mortar coffee shop, that does pay taxes, and does pay high rent, and has staked everything on their business, just like the mobile food truck has. So those are not lost with me, that people have staked everything to run these businesses. The problem I have is that the brick and mortar that was doing a specific number of sales on the weekend is seeing a 50 to 60% loss of revenue since they opened for weekend sales. That's a big problem for me. I know they pay sales taxes, taxes, I know they have a higher rent in establishment, and I know that they also stake their entire livelihood on it, and they can't be here tonight because they have family situations that keep them from being here. I hear you, Brandy, when you say it's competition, and it would be really nice if you honored this fact that this was a public meeting with respect. So I do, we are friends, but, good. So, those are my issues with this. I'm not a huge fan of 9 to 9. The times are indifferent to me at this point. It feels like the biggest thing that needs to be defined is mobile.
Absolutely.
And so, again, when the trailer disconnects from the truck, it's no longer mobile, and I hear you say that, and I'm reading it across the county document.
Now, I would say, I would think that the county would justify saying, you know, if you've got a food trailer, if you unhook for that, you're still readily, you know, you're still readily movable. You're not immediately movable, but you're readily movable. And I think what they're getting at there is, you know, when you cease to be, I don't want to use their words, when you become stationary, to me, that's not necessarily unhooking from a trailer. To me, I would say, if you, you know, built a deck and, you know, you've got, you know, furniture and things where, you know, kind of, if you think about the ones down, you know, down 105, there's, you know, just past the Walmart, there's some, you don't even see the original trailer anymore. I think it's the real estate officer on the left. You don't even see the trailer anymore. There's a shack over it, there's a weird room running off to the side, you know, trying to figure out, you know, what it is, but-
I can piggyback off of what she just said, and then twice, I asked that same business owner, "What are you observing?" And she's observing exactly what I, my suspicion was upfront about being fair, because originally, at that point, I'd just read some articles about what other people are fighting. And to be fair, they would say, "I watch them, drive up and use our parking space, walk across, get in their vehicles and leave." So the notion that they're hanging around, again, this is subjective. We make speed studies, and I want data, and you give me data. Cool. Yeah, so, but it's twice of me going to that business owner, "What are you observing?" And it confirms my suspicions, and when you read, the data from Dayton was one of them, Huntsville, many of them, and Alan, you can speak to this, the issue of fairness. The numbers that she pulled in is tangible efforts of fairness. They have a point.
So a quick thing, I'll piggyback off, you're piggybacking, if that's okay?
Okay.
I know, I've been from a, got 20 years with a sales background, I'm a serious one heck of a salesperson, and there's lots of people that have experience, right? If I'm a small business owner, and these coffee shops or ice cream shops are sitting, their customers are coming into my business to use the bathroom, I'm looking at that as a lead, okay? That's someone walking in my door, would not have walked in my door because they wouldn't have been there.
Not a kid that's 13, though.
Well, I mean, it's not just kids who use the bathroom, which adults do, I mean, and if, I think that's a great thing, it's food traffic, they wouldn't have been there, number one. And number two, we're glad to throw some sales classes for them, they'll learn how to close, right? Number two, if we're talking about, what about the coffee shop that's back there, are we? That used to be Nardby Nature?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so she, my most best friend in the whole wide world, Kristy Gildaneggs, sold that shop to her. Kristy and I were there four days ago. She stole hers from Kristy. She told me sales are up. So how are we seeing a 50 or 60% decline? She just told me the sales are great.
From Wine Fest. Sales are up from Wine Fest.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're not up-
No, not at Wine Fest. Kristy's been selling coffee to her, and she's been completely happy with her business. So I find that troubling, that she's giving me, Kristy, a different answer. Okay, so it's kind of odd.
And I heard the same thing that Julie heard.
So, I'm not saying she didn't say that, it's just kind of odd. I wish she was here so she could explain.
Well, I don't want to go, he said, she said, but that doesn't-
Yeah, I think you said, oh, because, I'm left at the floor now, if that's okay. I think that's important, because we're trying to put insinuations or putting things out there that trafficking historic Montgomery driven by these two food trucks are bad.
No, 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 I didn't say that.
Okay, saying that these people are going to use their bathrooms, says if they aren't here, they're going to be using our bathrooms. Where do we hope to be using our bathrooms? Because we supplies to clean the toilet. We wouldn't have to clean the toilet as much if these customers didn't come in here and use the bathroom. Come on. You know, I think that our goal here is to find out how they can all get along, obviously, and there's no one hurting each other at all in this situation. And going back to where you said a while ago, you know, buying about this study that, that we've paid, we've paid the company, they did that study, over $50,000 so far this year. They're going to tell us for everyone, obviously, but we've got a stack of this new people that say, "We love our food trucks in downtown, I've got to be willing to stay." Okay? The handful of businesses that are very successful, they're doing well, Tom has been offering, nice enough to offer his bathroom if they need it. They've got their restroom, the front door, which I've used, by the way. Everyone's in compliance with health codes. Everyone is, their gray ladder is getting parked every couple of days by the company that's licensed by the county come to it. Everyone's in compliance. At the end of the day, all this comes down to, for me, is the fact that we've got a handful of folks that, and I understand, have been here for a long time, they want, I mean, historically, they're still looking the exact same way. So P&amp;Z's are approved, Texas Twists and Shakes, they haven't approved Wilderlove, they didn't. So P&amp;Ts are approved, Texas Twisten Shakes, they haven't approved Waterlow, they didn't, and you didn't go before, you weren't asked to, we can't talk about it right now. You did get it, we'll talk about that, okay? So I guess my question here is not necessarily who's mobile or not, because you know they're not going anywhere, but is, what are ordinance of against the historic situation with these issues, right?
That needs the whole thing, these, ninety-six and two thousand, nothing applies probably, and all needs redone, and that's why the Congress got here, Tom's got Tom Balls, I've got Hutto's, which Hutto doesn't even want any to be permanent or semi-permanent, you have fourteen day, thirty day, ninety day, or one hundred and eighty day, or you don't have a business there.
Nothing.
Nope, I mean, they're fast drops, I mean, all of these have a similar theme, but they have different caveats, right? And we need to make sure that we have our own, and bathrooms are an issue, they are, and according to the, according to the county, the way that I understand it is, you cannot have a mobile truck, you have to use, if you are a truck and you're using a restaurant's bathroom, you have to carry the same hours as that restaurant. And there has been an employee of the ice cream truck seen running downtown trying to open doors to go to the bathroom, on a Sunday when everything's closed. I wish we were a Sunday a week down, I think it would be helpful, but I'm only stating that a bathroom is important to wash hands, to go to the restroom, ice cream melts, coffee, it spills, I miss full coffee. So, I mean, you need to be able to have a way to wash your hands and go to the restroom if you need to.
They've got a restroom in front, they haven't been there, now, if you open up both the windows.
I have been there, but they close at four, there's other hours.
Twenty-four hours a day.
Well, I wouldn't know that, and I didn't know that it was open, you did tell me that you did have a bathroom on there, but I did not know it was open, and so then why are employees of the ice cream trailer going to another restroom then?
Got to talk to the manager of the place.
Well, because it's an issue that needs to be resolved, or have an ordinance around it, to be able to provide guidance.
Some people needing that, are we talking about the employee?
Oh, employees and customers.
So should we hold mobile food units to a different standard than what we hold, say the antique shops downtown, who may or may not have a public bathroom, or a restaurant?
Antique shops are not eating, you're buying.
But if the restaurant does not, is not allowed to have a bathroom for the public?
There's bathrooms, what antique shops don't have a restroom?
The restaurant code doesn't provide, for the county, doesn't provide a code that regulates you have to have a restroom for your employees.
It says for employees, not your customers.
Yeah, sorry.
Right, so you've got to have it for your employees, you don't have to have it for your patrons, so I guess what I'm, you know, looking to ask at the council is, do you believe that there's a situation involving food trucks that would require them to have a bathroom, and say, if it was a Cold Stone Creamery, it wouldn't have to have a bathroom?
But don't they have to?
No.
They don't?
You've got to have it for your employees.
Some guys have a public restroom. It does, but it's not required to.
Yeah, there's a lot of businesses that don't provide.
They just do that because it's a courtesy.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, too, that, yes, the health department's been out here more than a dozen times probably at this point, and every time they come out, they've been completely happy with everything they've seen, from a restaurant perspective, to food storage, to everything, I mean, we've, you know, we can keep, they get calls almost daily from some of the neighbors downtown, and, you know, they're not going to find anything, maybe somebody will, so far, the health, quite frankly, the guys at county have become quite annoyed with getting the phone calls every other day, well, they did this, they did that, they're fine, leave them alone. So, at the end of the day, we need to figure out something that's going to get this situation taken care of, I almost think it's just to pull it out and separate it, honestly.
Do you have a stake in any of the trailers?
I eat a lot of ice cream, I drink a lot of coffee.
You're the best.
I have a question.
That's why we're going to start with this tax, because I said, yeah, I paid half of those.
Well, a thousand dollars yields twenty dollars in city tax.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, I'll eat my ice cream, trust me.
I have a question for Alan.
Councilor is it?
The two thousand, December two thousand nineteen article in Huntsville, at that point, the paper had reported that there were twenty cities at that point who had either brand new or refurbished, updated truck ordinances. And, so, from a legal standpoint, as I stated, this kind of off my head initially, I can envision from all of that newspaper recordings on prior meetings of all these cities, going through what we're going through now, that, that pushback you'll get from the mortar, brick and mortar, versus the pushback you'll get from the food truck industry, what is it that the brick and mortar companies consistently are able to uphold? Because we're talking about issues in many cases, correct me if I'm wrong, but consistently I see this idea that if someone puts a similar product near an already established business playing by a different set of rules, legal counsel typically says, that's a no-no. I call it bad form, the bad form isn't legal to me. So give me, is that the legal deal? Because this is, you know, whether we agree with the numbers or not, to me, again, common sense tells me that owner A is going to have a problem anywhere in the city, if they're stuck and can't move to where the business is, and then somebody goes in front. Isn't that supposed to be kind of paramount in our considerations, whether we agree with who lost money or not?
Well, so generally, that is, that is not the issue that becomes the focus. It more often becomes a focus of where in the UNT are these types of establishments?
So you think that's number one?
Location.
Location, only, but there's no, because I've seen a lot of pushback when you rule this way, and then the others come at you as policymakers and say, oh, you know, it's not fair, and they get their lawyers. You know where I'm coming from on this? Because I would be tipped, I would be highly tipped, if I put that much sacrifice, and I'm playing by this set of rules, and somebody else is going to roll up in my front yard? But don't you think that should be a consideration?
Well, it's certainly the end, and I think that's why sometimes you see them not permitting near certain businesses, which make up a high number of separate consequences, but it is certainly not, generally, the first issue that the cities are looking at.
So the first issue is strictly location.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to the one through six, the only one that you are not comfortable with was number three, correct?
And number five?
Three and four, also three and five.
Three and five.
Right.
And your recommendation on the hours were?
I don't, to you guys, but again, if you are plugged into electricity, you're not making any external noises and things like that, I don't see a difference if I could go to the docks at six AM versus go see Ken at six AM, but that's my own personal opinion.
I don't think we want them to have any noise.
Is the nine o'clock at night, is that adequate? Have we had any complaints on nine o'clock is too late, nine o'clock's not late enough? What's going on with the nine o'clock?
I've not heard anything related to the nine B, I don't want to ask these guys to get out of line on a meeting here, but.
I haven't read anything of anybody having, if anything they want earlier, I haven't heard anybody wanting later, and I don't think that.
I think where that would come into play would be like the food truck parking, again, those guys, you know, if a food truck wants to.
That's going to be something different.
Food establishment.
All right, so on number five, we're going to change it to seven to nine?
Or, that's.
Six thirty?
I've heard that motion around and ask y'all that.
I'm fine, six thirty, nine o'clock, I mean, what, six thirty?
Remember about the noise issue, if they're using a generator?
You need to specify the knowledge.
As long as they're self-sufficient with no generator, six thirty is great, I think, that's my opinion.
With a generator nine to nine.
Yeah.
Right, if you guys would allow us to kind of work with that, but, you know, if that's the direction that we need, and I'll work it down, and Caleb won't have, and, you know, obviously, you know.
So the generator stays nine to nine, the way it sounds, and if you're not on the generator, six thirty to nine, if you're in the town of Montgomery, historic district or anywhere else, yes?
Right, that's pretty clear.
Can I ask a question to someone in the audience, pardon it up, what are y'all's hours?
I don't just say we're not getting up early.
Okay, I didn't think anybody'd eat potatoes at six thirty.
We do eleven to seven.
Eleven to seven, okay, so that would not have piqued on your business either, okay?
My only concern with nine is, I know that most of the other restaurants close at nine, but when there is a festival, for example, Wine Fest, that ended at nine, I know that there were several businesses that decided to stay open late to capture some of that last minute business, and it worked really well for them, and so I could see nine o'clock coming in the future being an issue, because, well, so-and-so across the street got to stay up until ten, why can't I stay up until ten?
Why can't we have festival hours here?
Let's go back to the juvenile curfew ordinance, if your parents are not with you at the time you're seen downtown, then that's where the police department come in, nine o'clock is adequate.
Right, the, you know, again, just to point out that the street festivals, the hours don't apply when you're part of a festival.
Okay, but if we have, if we have them not part of the festival, do we allow our trailers to match the times that the festival runs? I think we should.
Every other trailer at Wine Fest was required to close at nine, when the concert was over, every other vendor closed at nine, but our downtown businesses stayed open an extra hour to capture the people leaving.
But they weren't part of the festival.
Right, they weren't, so, but the festival, I think, I think the food truck trailers should be able to, again, if they're self-sufficient and y'all want to sell at a festival at six thirty in the morning, go for it, you want to sell ice cream at six thirty in the morning, go for it, as long as there's no generator, however, I think that they should be able to stay open as long as the festival's going on, or whatever the festival hours are.
You know, would you, would you say then, you know, that may not be applicable to somebody, you know, down on the program, if there's a downtown festival, are you thinking that it would be, if you're all.
Like an umbrella or just the district, so, do y'all think that y'all would capture people leaving a festival to come to you, even though you're outside the historical district?
We take them on Thursday nights.
Yeah.
I mean, people come when they finish.
Uh, sit and stroll and then they go.
Yeah.
I think we allow it to be a possibility, and if you don't want to do it, you don't do it, but you have the ability to do it, to stay open.
Get some money, kind of craft.
Well, maybe write it in that you have, you know, one hour, festival hours on this number five, if we're talking about six to nine for your operational hours, and nine to nine with the generator, then you could write in, plus the available option of one additional hour post whatever the festival time closes, or some things about wording.
Is there any way, because that's what was quite confusing in the original document, was you had festival hours, and then you had, is there any way to get that completely, okay, so here's the festival section? I think that would be helpful, to see it separate.
Separate, oh, I got you.
Yeah. That might give a little bit of clarity, you know.
Yes, because we do want different scenarios for festivals, that's a different occasion.
And by the way, Fast Truck also has a great food truck ordinance outlining what permits, permitting, permitter, food cart, mobile food cart with concession cart, I mean, I think we need to get specific on what these are, so that there's no gray area, and you have to pick A, B, C, or D, tell me what you are, and then you go according to the guidelines, step forth to what you are.
So sort of going back to some of those county requirements, and if I can ask one question before that, back to the mobility question, I know it's the hardest one to answer, but it's one that we ought not leave here without some kind of direction. What constitutes mobile in mobile food vendor to the council, is it?
I think Julie is spot on, it makes sense, if it's not hooked up, they can't go on its own, but it's.
But even the county definitions are not, I mean, like, I'm reading the county ones, and they're vague and ambiguous, like, I don't understand, I don't understand the county, what, like, I'm trying to put this food trailer under the county one, and I don't even know right now, sitting here reading it, whether or not it's restricted or unrestricted.
Hey, use that term around, you know, restricted would mean you only buy stuff out of the auto repackage, you don't put anything on your truck, you're unrestricted when you can make your stuff there out of ingredients that you're, you know, are going to put together.
Well, what's wrong with saying if you have wheels, it's designed to move? And that is a quote from at least a couple of the cities that bore this stuff out. Listen, you got wheels, by definition, you're mobile, that's what the legal council said, that's what the counselor said, it makes it, to me, simple, you're designed to roll. Except for the exceptions of the festival, and mobile also has the qualification of whatever we want to say as far as sitting in a certain location for a certain amount of time, again, staying with the mobile concept, which to me is an advantage for being mobile. You go, you, the brick and mortar can't pick up and go, if I'm running that truck, that rascal's going to be where the people are, and I want to be kind to those entrepreneurs who will use a mobile truck the way mobile trucks are designed to roll.
What's a mobile truck? Is it a trailer, like a FedEx truck?
You got wheels on it.
That's two different things, though, that's.
Trailer that has wheels on it.
Yeah, but a trailer's.
We're talking about vending and wheels, aren't we?
Now, one clarification, the.
I mixed it up for you, sorry.
The whole definition of the wide orders, mobile food unit, we throw around food trucks a lot, and I'm guilty of it, but the truth is, I've been meeting you guys, been talking about food trucks, but mobile food unit, and then what our definition had was, we've been about concession trailer, a food truck, a concession cart, so to that point of being able to articulate, you know, there's a mobile food unit, and these are the types of things that we're talking about, this, you know, may not be an inclusive list, but it includes, you know, trailers, trucks, carts, things like that.
So, Dave, just up to a must out there, would that include a bicycle?
Yeah.
If I came tomorrow and got a special permit, and I'm going to sell spread potatoes on the stick, and I'm going to sell ice cream in my thing, two different deals, and I'm riding through the festival where the people are, would I need a special permit, would I be considered mobile?
You wouldn't be a mobile food vendor.
And if I hire ten guys going by, and we're full of ice cream and potatoes, and we're going through, would we be considered mobile?
Yes, sir.
Your concession cart.
And if they come with a flatbed trailer, and it's got wheels on it, and they're selling hay out of the backside of it, it's still mobile.
But it can't move itself, that's the party.
It's still mobile, you can't leave your mobile unit and sell, period.
But back to that, Dave, and you, you were talking about the restroom, isn't that restroom behind the community center open all the time?
Yes.
It is, I think PD does lock it up at some point, and I don't know that for sure, since I've been.
People have to use it where they go to it, right?
Right, you know, certainly that restroom is, you know.
It's for the public.
It's a public restroom as opposed to a private one.
So maybe, sorry, I said, maybe we need to define this as two separate words, maybe we need this defined as a mobile food unit and a semi-mobile food unit, because it would seem, in the current definition of mobile, these trailers are not. But they are also not a brick and mortar restaurant that needs that much further oversight, like parking lot lights and specific parking spaces and things like that. So can we find a middle ground where we have a mobile food unit and a semi-mobile food unit? I mean.
Okay, what, can they just, are you on page fifty-five of the ordinance? It says, it lists, the term mobile food unit shall include but not be limited to one, two, and three, what's wrong with those? You got the concession trailer, you got the concession carts, which would be the bicycles, and you've got the mobile food truck.
Because this concession trailer is defined on this ordinance as a concession trailer is self-contained unit that is pulled by a motorized unit and has no power to move on its own.
That's correct.
Okay.
Isn't that what they are?
Yes.
Okay, then it's on here, so they're classified a mobile food unit in the definition.
Can the proposed have that?
Proposed.
Yes. Right, you know, we took, kind of, in a little outdated terms for, you know, for food trucks, or, you know, mobile food, whatever, and they said, well, this is kind of what a modern landscape looks like with these things, there are carts, there's trailers, there's trucks, but they're all mobile food units.
So what else are y'all talking about that needs to be called semi-permanent or something?
Well, those are, those are suggestions for additions on there, are these current?
Oh, no, you... This is proposed.
Yeah, that's what I was...
Right, you know, this was, so...
I think I was just looking more, Carol, at the county one and not our actual city one.
Okay.
And the definitions on the county one are pretty sketchy and...
Yes, totally. So that can tumble, "Mobile shall mean being capable of being inactive, inactive but not necessarily continuous movement." "Mobile food vendor shall mean any business which sells food or beverages from a vehicle or structure which is capable of being moved from place to place." The term shall include but is not limited to, mobile food truck, concession cart, and trailer. I mean, some of these, and then there's peddler, like, some of these get super granular, which, it spins my head. I think we need it clear, but we need to be very concise, and I don't think we need, some of these had twelve different definitions. And, you know, then you get into like, if it's blue, it's this, if it's pink, it's this, we don't need that. But we need to understand, if there's a motor, what does that mean, if there's wheels on it, with motor, with that motor, what does that mean? Uh, wheels, no wheels on it, but can't move by itself, I mean, what does that mean? I think we need like four, five, six definitions, maybe your peddler, also, they keep it very clean, because you get too bogged down and things, it, it doesn't, then somebody straddles to, 'cause that's when you start to slice it too much, you're gonna have crossover, then we're, then we really get back in the situation we're in right now.
The thing that would provide the most clarity is if you come to get a mobile food vendor permit, how mobile do you have to be, you know, articulating and quantifying what that, you know, what that mobility looks like? And, and to the point of, you know, whether it's, you know, every forty-eight hours, is it a semi-permanent? Whatever it is, if, if staff has a clear answer on, this is what, you know, council feels mobile means as part of this permit, I think that would give us, that's, again, to me, that's the fundamental question.
So why can't we take the proposed city one that you have here, which relatively at this moment, looks pretty good, and marry in the county ordinance so that we have both of these, because the county one regulates how often it has to be moved and pumped and all of that. So I don't understand why we need to have that in addition to it if we just don't adopt the county one as ours, and if we're gonna be the ones enforcing it anyway, we might as well have the county one as ours.
And the health code comes from the county, so it makes sense that the health code just marries to whatever our policy is.
Again, I would, I would keep out things in the county's requirements that talk about, you know, we're gonna be monitoring water quality samples, we don't, you know, we don't wanna roll that up into, in the standard that we have today, and we don't agree to help department. But again, you know, taking those three or four, or getting five, six, whatever those county requirements are that the council feels like these are what we would like to see. These are the pieces that we'd like, that's what I think we roll into our ordinance, and that gives us the latitude then to go out and propose those.
So the last thing we haven't talked about then, that's gonna be the straw on the camel's back, is the special use permit for the historic district, 'cause that seems to be the last thing that hasn't been discussed, that's the critical piece, so what requires a special use permit, what are the hoops that, is it a special use permit per trailer, is it a special use permit per taxing address?
Right, you know, to me, you know, so special use permits are, they can be almost anything you want, right, so, so that's, that's good and that's bad. Though it's, it's more bad than good in my view, because it's very tough to define and get something clear and concise, but how to get a special use permit, it's a zoning tool. Anytime you make a change to a zoning, so if you give someone a special use permit, from a, from a public notice, from a legal standpoint, it's just like you, you have to follow the seven steps as if you were going to rezone that block. So there's legal notice, there's public hearing, because you're making a change to the zoning. And that's, that's back to the special use permit, so to me, a special use permit, I have a hard time tying it to a vendor. I, I can really easily tie a special use permit to a site.
Yeah.
Because it's a physical thing that's not in one way, that allows a certain, you know, amount of use.
But you already said currently in our historic district, there's no specific regulation that would include or exclude a food truck.
That's where the special use permit comes from, to, to be able to say, in our table of uses, we don't say that, that, that you can, you know, again, have a food truck park, and again, try not to think about all the, you know, the amenities and things that would go with it, but if that's not on our table of uses, that's where you need a special use permit. And you could say, just in the historic district, if you're gonna be a local food vendor, to be clear, I don't think someone who's coming into the historic district for a day, or for a lunch period, or for a dinner period, need, you don't wanna get that special use permit, again, it's a two-ish month process, our fee's five hundred bucks. You go there, planning and zoning for a couple of public hearings, and you come to city council for another one, you're out the time and money whether or not the council decides to grant that special use permit or not, so we don't want to log, in my view, we don't want a special use permit into something that's so ingrained that essentially everybody who's coming to you to operate in the historic district is a two-fold...
So Dave, let me ask you this, up to the special use permit ambiguity, do you have enough at this point to help us to go with these recommendations to something we can look at at the next council meeting?
I think we've got enough to work on now, and we shouldn't without, you know, putting kind of, you know, the, uh, the hours in, you know, into outings and, and Caleb's schedule. I certainly feel like we've got enough to be able to come back, because this draft doesn't need much, it just needs a few things here and there to, what I think would be to get you guys to a point where we could, you know, get down to a little bit finer level to say, okay, I'm looking at this section, and I would like to amend this, you know, this part of this draft.
Okay.
So it's a lot of what's happening, we have something to do, with the exception of that, of the special use permit, and if you guys would like us just to bring, you know, some more thoughts back on that, or if you wanna hash some more out?
Well, what I'd like to see is, is again, something up to the special use, and bring it to us, and then maybe some of your recommendations that would qualify as special use, and then we can hash it out at the next meeting.
I think that's a, that's a manageable workload in terms of, you know, one, y'all, you, uh, being able to process that, and the public being able to process that. I don't think we move into that next meeting and adopt that draft, because, again, we wanna put that special use permit section in there. We just wanna do what we've got on paper, and then that's it, that's special use permit, I don't think we need a workshop for it, because we can probably do enough to deal with it, to get it into an agenda out of a meeting without, you know, really throwing the meeting out of whack, and, you know, spending too much time on...
I agree.
And I assume, I have no clue and did not do my research on the historic district, but is there a way, I'm sure I can just go pull it by searching online on our website?
You can, you know, if you love, I would, I would...
I would love, I would love, see?
I'd be happy to talk to you about this for a second.
I would like to know more of the zoning requirements and regulations in regards to the historic district, what the paint color regulations are, and the hours of operation for everybody else, no, I wanna know what the rules are, and how and what and why food trucks require a special use permit.
We'll reach out to you tomorrow, if you're around, we can set up a time for you to come in, and, you know, we'll sit down, you know, spend an hour going through the shows, you know, how much time, I'd be glad to.
Perfect, thanks, Dave.
Dave, I'd like to send you like the five things that I'd like, maybe five to ten things I'd like to see in the next, and then as well as giving an announcement of a special use permit, and then the definitions, I just wanted to, 'cause I pulled up quite a few, and some of them have some really good definitions, and just give it to you for food for thought as well.
Please, anybody, if you have any thoughts at all, don't hesitate to email it, those are the topics that are on here.
But overall, the proposed ordinance, that is the temporary one that wrote up that Carol was referencing fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven, the only changes I saw that we're making are we're discussing removing item four and amending item six for the hours versus generator or no generator, and otherwise...
And then we'll get some of those council regulations, we'll be gonna look at...
Yes, and merge them together.
Right, sounds good.
So Dave, we're not putting in anything about what they should look like, right, in the historical district.
It's all armies there.
Because it's, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna get into the historic district, you know, as in the guidelines and things like that, let's do that over in the zoning.
Okay, so if I, I came in tomorrow and I moved, uh, Bill and the coffee truck out, and I brought a eighteen-wheeler trailer, and long as I make it, if I make it look like Mad Heart Baby's Bill, then would that be okay?
Yeah.
It's in historicals now, and it's in the historical district, so would that be a problem?
You would still have to get the planning and zoning approval, again, I, I am not asking the Wilkerlove guys to come yet to P and Z, because I needed some clarity, I, you know, again, it's, it, I don't, I'd like to know where council wants to go with this vendor ordinance before, if, if they were gonna say, we don't want food trucks at all in the city, you know, we want you to get rid of them. I didn't wanna have to, you know, drag them through P and Z to, you know, for nothing, but, but obviously, again, if it's an exterior change in the historical district, that goes to the planning and zoning commission for it.
I feel like it's easy to say, sitting up here, I know that the, these emails don't seem like everybody understands this, but I feel like from a person who has volunteered to sit and bring some sort of oversight to a city, that I, one, value and appreciate capitalism at the absolute paramount.
Yes.
Because I understand, we just sat through budget sessions, I mean...
It's what built this country.
Yep.
It's what built this city, and what continues to allow us to do home set exemptions and saving for capital for some infrastructures and all of these things, because the sales tax revenue is so high, so please, 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 if nothing else becomes clear, I am confident that I speak for every one of these volunteers, that we value and appreciate capitalism.
And what's unique, and something I sell about Montgomery all the time, is when you walk into a store in downtown, you're gonna have the proprietor behind the desk, I know y'all, I've heard of you, and the food truck is no different, you typically have the proprietor, and that's something that's unique that you don't get in big cities all the time, or if they're a franchised, uh, food truck. That's what makes us special, you can say, I live right down the road, I live right down the road, my kids go to school here, and that is a similar community, or I am the owner, you know? And that coffee's on me today, you know, and that happens, and that's awesome. And you get to see them in Kroger, you get to see them at school, you get to see them all the time, you, that doesn't happen in a big town at all. So, again, capitalism, I'm all for big, I'm all for small business, I'm all for capitalism, people making money, it's not about big boxes. That's why big boxes are out of the sound, this is our found jewel, we wanna protect it.
Speaking of that, when you watch that hour and a nine, it's really comical, because it, it really stresses and points the fact that people come from, from far around to get their picture snapped, and dress up and colonial this and that, you will never see that in front of Walmart.
Yeah.
You, you see that in the culture and the heritage that those people came to see, and it's really comical to see, you know, people dressed up, you never see that at Walmart, so that's a good point about the historical preservation.
They do have movies about people at Walmart, but you're right there, not in historical.
Okay, so do we, I mean, you feel good if we're gonna see some...
Do we have a direction, you feel like?
If the attorney, if anybody feels like to give you some clarity, I, I feel we gotta bring you guys' draft back, that you're gonna be happy with, and, and again, it's, it's, you know, not the final product, and all of that, I'm saying that to the public, you know, more than anybody else, it's not the final thing that we're getting ready to do, but it's, it's that next step, and it's a concrete step, and getting that thing solid.
And it's not one person up here that's saying everything, that's doing everything, it's been a collaborative effort.
Right, okay.
Oh, yeah?
Mm-hmm. Good, thank you.
And just for one more clarification, the approximate foot measurement from this property to the restrooms?
About four hundred feet.
So it's gonna be outside?
You know, three fifty-ish, you know, somewhere like that, I don't know if you guys have moved, you know, three fifty-ish with...
So it's outside of the, the county's permit of three hundred?
Right, which is the, the, you know, the alternate, you know, bathroom agreement, it would've been really easy, you know, had the bathrooms been, you know, down on this side of the, you know, of, of the community building property, then it would've just been an armory, right, so...
That's what I mean, does Kate's bathroom count as well then, right?
Right, yeah, that didn't know that.
The county said that, his bathroom's fine, okay.
Yeah, that, you know, for my station, the county commissioners, you know, the coast great bathroom doesn't, didn't, you know, they don't need anything to do with that, because there's a bathroom there, and...
But when it's closed, there's no bathroom, to speak of, right? No, the cage is a little right, is what I'm saying.
Kevin guys said he just had to a cage, and he said, cage is compliant, so that's fine, but...
Good, good.
Okay. So, you know, to follow up that distance is very important, whatever we set that distance at, guys, that's a, it's, it's really important, you know, because there's, you know, from a geographic standpoint, you know, downtown, but at the same time, you know, in, in, you know, if someone wants to put a food truck, you know, down the road on a vacant piece of property, we're gonna be thinking about that, you know, that distance, it's a really important decision for us.
And if they're just completely mobile unit, like, for instance, when they come to Snowball, so Live Maine Lobster, one of those trucks, the understanding and premise is that, one, they have permission from the property owner, and, two, access to their facilities?
They either have a restroom on there for, for their employees to use, or they use, you know, what's wrong, or they use, you know, the community building bathrooms, but...
Well, and Snowball sits on a foundation, it's not mobile, it's not a trailer, it's actually a house, but they, and because they have a sink, they're able to allow their employees to wash their hands and do, to go to the restroom, I think they go into gyms, I think.
No, they have a restroom at, at Snowball, so...
All right, my bad.
It's actually, they have accessible too, and I only know that 'cause I have a kid employed there.
There you go, okay, so then they've had all the boxes, okay, but just to be clear that it's not a mobile unit.
Right, right.
Right, no, they're not mobile.
Right. So, um, what about place, well, I guess, I don't know, like, First Montgomery does their summer fest or winter fest things, and they have mobile food trucks in, is it gonna fall underneath the festival permit, or no, because it's private property, they do what they want, how do things like...
They get a one-day permit, right, maybe we just still have one day to order for twenty bucks and...
I guess, I don't know, that's why I was...
'Cause I mean, that's what BASTRA, or head of, one day is twenty, one day...
Well, where's where the festival is covered by the festival.
But that's not a festival if it's in a church, 'cause they don't qualify as a festival, so, it's, and like, the school didn't qualify as a festival. It was just come up here, so they should probably get a day permit, if it's twenty bucks or whatever the cost is, right?
Or it's either one month or six month permit.
Oh, one month, okay.
Fifty dollars, but...
Well, maybe we start a one day, just for, if you're gonna come in for convocation, come in. But what defines festival?
It might be good...
Organizer, and they have to go meet with the chief, and have police, and all of that.
The church, the church does have an organizer, and they do bring in all kinds of vendors for their summer fest, and, so then maybe they need to get a festival permit, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it'd be a lot, it'd be a lot more economical on all of their vendors, and I think, you know, my understanding of, you know, kind of the festival, you know, part of the vendor ordinance would be, you know, cut out for a situation exactly like that, even though it's on private property, there are some considerations that, you know, that, you know, both, you know, the law enforcement and, you know, the avenue side need to look at in terms of, again, just accounting for...
Another example of the one day is the Methodist Church prayer thing that we had last Saturday, when we were in the, uh, planning stages, it was discussed of, uh, asking a vending unit to come out, we didn't think we had time to secure it, but that's another one day, it was actually just a three-hour window of time.
Yeah.
And so that might fall under the special use.
But they could, they could do it for twenty hours and leave and go to another corner.
The twenty-dollar day pass would be cheaper than the five hundred-dollar special use pass.
Because you'll start splitting hairs.
Well, we're doing this, we can look at what you're talking about today, or some minor modifications that we covered at S A, especially that.
I just wanna come back six months from now, because somebody came in and complained that a church had a festival, or here we come through Halloween, and Lone Star Cowboy Church does this Halloween festival, you know, like, we're coming down the festival season, the weather's beautiful, and everybody wants to be outside.
Right.
So I don't wanna revisit it in six months, because, oops, we didn't think of that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It has been moved in second that we adjourn this meeting, this motion's debatable, minimal request before to vote, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, the ayes have the motion carries, it's eight twenty-nine P M, and adjourn this meeting, thank you. Have a great week.